Nobody.
But where does it say?
Like, see the thumbs up and then the little silhouette of a person, which is zero. It's zero people.
Good work to go figure.
You just played the pin. Feed it.
That's probably it. Yeah, L H M Social Services.
The Latina.
You must have.
There was enough. We're L H M. Sorry. Okay, thank you. Good job.
L H M Foundation.
The downed bus in one of them. God, I thank you so much. Only if I fold in the right direction.
Yes, I'm gonna put a sticker.
Well, good evening, thank.
What's happening then? It's fifteen or thirty since we're.
Um.
This is staying on our schedule? Doesn't matter?
I don't, I think what's important is that you advertise that you would start at six thirty, but if you, you know, get ahead, you really have to hold over.
Okay, okay. We'll stay at fifteen. We'll stay at fifteen, okay? Ladies, so, thank you for being here. Fifteen, we allow fifteen minutes.
Excellent.
Ten minutes will stop the hard stop in case we have some questions. So your presentation, if I stop you, I apologize, but we might have questions.
Absolutely, I hope you do, thank you very much.
And please introduce yourselves and tell us about your project.
Thank you. My name is Amy Forster. I'm the CEO of L H M Social Services Foundation, and I'm joined by my colleague Ellen Abbott, who is our Director of Development. So thank you very much for having us this evening. Our project, ours as you probably saw on the application, our project is with respect to the purchase of two vehicles, but it is part of a larger project that I need to talk about a little bit to put it into context. So we were here last year and received a generous grant in support of another aspect of our project. But our project is the L H M Horizon's Transitional Housing Program. It is a transitional housing program for unhoused individuals and families primarily in Dolphin County, and it is a referral-based program. So we have been networking with and meeting regularly with Dolphin County Human Services, Children and Youth Services, and upwards of two dozen or more nonprofit organizations and churches that were housed in our area, anticipating referrals from these organizations into our Transitional Housing Program. I apologize, I dropped my reading glasses on the way in here, so I was going to get my own slides. But we are opening the program on January twelfth, twenty twenty-six. It is a hard open, we are ready to go. We've moved our staff already into the Transitional Housing Facility, and we are in the midst of hiring our last couple staff members in anticipation of that January twelfth opening. As I said, we were reviewing a ward last year that we use to actually buy, or we are using to buy the furnishings for the first twelve units in the Transitional Housing Facility. We are quite confident, and I hope our materials supported that, that there is still a significant need for additional transitional housing here in Dolphin County. We submitted letters of support from Randy Yeager, the Director of the Department of Human Services, and the Executive Director of Christian Churches United. But as I indicated earlier, we also met with literally dozens of others who are supporting the program and in fact referring participants to us. Our program, as you may recall or you may have seen in the materials, is actually being offered in a congregant setting. So it's in a former senior living facility. We have fifty-eight units size for individuals and families. Not only will we be providing the housing, we are providing three meals a day, a hot dinner, a full breakfast. If we're having no lunch, that's available at breakfast time. And we're also providing intensive case management services to help individuals chart their path towards housing security. When I say intensive case management, our current budgeted caseload per case manager is fifteen program participants to one case manager. So we've made it clear that our expectation is intensive case management. We'll talk about the vehicles in just a moment, but wanting to show the program itself, just to provide a little more context. We didn't have these photos available to us last year when we were here. But if you take a look, that photo on the left is the outside of the facility. It is, I can tell you it is three tenths of a mile as the crow flies from Harrisburg High School. I haven't added this to it. Maybe it's about a half mile as the crow flies from here. But the building is there on the left. The upper right corner is our dining room, where we can serve the hot meals for all participants in community setting. And the lower right photo is the back of the building. So what I didn't mention is it actually sits on fifteen acres of green space, which is pretty amazing, you know, in this area. It kind of backs up to the green belt, just to kind of orient you to where it is. That photo on the left is what I'll call a standard single unit. It could be a double under the building code, but it's really, we're treating it as a standard single unit. There's a private restroom in each unit, which you'll see at the back there. Each unit will have kind of dorm-style furniture. That's what's being delivered the week after next. Wood furniture, bed, chest of drawers, table and chairs, mini fridge and microwave. And then again, there's the private bathroom. The upper right corner is a really important space for the program, the project itself. This is the education and appointment success space. So here's, we have a company that's donated ten laptops that we have, will have set up in this space. We have volunteers that are coming in to help program participants search for jobs, apply for jobs, do the onboarding necessary once they secure a job. And similarly, if we have program participants who are attending our fair area community college or any sort of certification program, we can have tutoring in that space available as well. And then finally, the lower right is really just the lobby, but what we like to feature in that space is the mailboxes. You know, as you're probably aware, one of the biggest barriers to unhoused individuals accessing state federal benefits is having a fixed address. Sure, the building has an address, but there's dignity about having a mailbox with its own key, you know, enforced, so not digging around in your mail. So that is really a highway for us. With respect to the specific sub-project that is forming the basis for our grant application, we have applied for funding for two vehicles to help get program participants and their approved family members who are in our facility to necessary appointments. Now, we are three tenths of a mile from a bus stop. I don't want to leave, you know, we have no intention of taking everybody to every appointment they have. To the contrary, we want to help individuals, empower individuals, to navigate that transportation issue themselves. However, we're still aware that especially early in their time with us, individuals will require transportation, you know, to appointments, whether it's outings to the grocery store, et cetera. So that's the funding that we applied for with respect to our grant application. Ellen, can I punt it to you to talk about Co-Stars just a little bit?
Yeah, of course. So we've sourced quotes from a Co-Stars approved vendor because it's our intention to just be really sustainable with everything that we're doing, and going through a Co-Stars vendor would allow us to purchase new vehicles with a warranty at a discount. If it's like discount, it's about one or two percent on the vehicles, but nonetheless. We were approved for, to be a Co-Stars, participating in Co-Stars via our furniture grant application last year.
Ellen, do you speak?
Sure, and, you know, the Horizons program, we think really fits into the overall Dolphin County comprehensive plan. Housing is identified as one of the primary goals of the plan, and it's our intention to build people up so that they can find and sustain their own permanent housing. We're also going to engage in things like job readiness programming, the networking with employers, community colleges, you know, other educational opportunities for our participants so that they can get the skills they need to be properly employed.
And we probably didn't even use our entire ten minutes, but that's what we wanted to share with you. I know we provided some supplemental responses, I think on Fridays, to questions you had. So if any of that wasn't sufficient to address those questions, we'd be happy to answer that as well.
What do you envision the average length of stay? Or is, do you have a time limit for the folks who are in transitional housing?
Thanks for asking. Up to eighteen months. It is, so the outside is eighteen months, and we are not, our budget model is built on folks unveiling themselves of the full eighteen months. Now, certainly, if folks are ready to leave earlier, that is wonderful, but we do have it built out as up to eighteen months.
And with your intensive case management, would you elaborate on intensive case management? Jobs, housing, are you helping with financial literacy so that they can save money, so they can be housed properly? Could you just elaborate?
Absolutely, thank you. So with, that's a, there's actually two responses to that, because it's a really good question. When I use the word intensive, I was focusing at the time more on, we look at case management models, and a lot of case management models in Scatterside Transitional Housing is a meeting every thirty days or a meeting every sixty days. We're requiring a meeting with the case manager every day. But our, excuse me, every week. But our case managers' offices are in our Transitional Housing Facility, as is my office, as is Ellen's office. So in addition to that weekly formal meeting, there will be informal meetings always every day. Now to the programming question, yes, we have, what do I call it, a stable of partners that we are working with to provide, for example, financial literacy training. We have two banks and a financial advisor, advisory firm that's interested in coming in and offering that program. We're working quickly or closely with the United Way of the Caval Region with its three pillars, the access to healthcare, access to ready for school, and ready for success, the workforce training piece of that. Our partner for the access to healthcare piece is going to be Penn State Health. So our case managers will be partnering with these third-party entities to ensure that we're providing that programming. So I talk about access to healthcare, financial literacy. We have employers who have offered their, individuals from their HR department to come in and staff some of those, you saw the tables in the employment readiness space, to staff those tables or volunteer at those tables to provide workforce development-type training. We have a coordinator of spiritual care. We do not have a mandated spiritual component of our program, but that's just another aspect of programming that we're making available to individuals. So that's a discretionary aspect of the program. I think those are the main ones. I mean, missing health and wellness.
And somebody of those people that are experiencing homelessness have drug and alcohol issues and mental health issues, what are your admissions requirements? Is somebody, are you, do they have to be clean in order to be admitted? Do they have a kind of drug and alcohol treatment program? And what kind of mental health services are you providing?
So for our eligibility requirements, we are using the HUD definition of homeless, but we are expanding it in two ways because we don't receive HUD funds. One way is, and I apologize if you're well aware of this, one way is if you are someone who is, for example, couch surfing, you only qualify as being homeless under the HUD definition if you have children. If you are a twenty-three-year-old who is aged out of the foster care system and have nowhere to go, you don't qualify as homeless. So our eligibility requirements expand the definition in that way, and expand the definition in the way that if you are someone who is staying with your mom, with your kids at a motel, and you are using public or charitable vouchers for the hotel, you qualify as homeless. If you are using your benefits the first two days of the month that you proceed because you want to take a break and stay at a motel, you no longer qualify as homeless because you use your own funds. So those are our basic eligibility requirements. We are doing background screenings. And we've, you know, I'm an attorney by training, so we've written these policies both typed and with an appropriate amount of wiggle room because we are doing background screenings, and we are generally being guided by the CPSL requirements, such that if you couldn't teach in a school, you probably can't live in our facility to have children there. However, because we aren't bound by that, we have some flexibility, exercise that flexibility, depending on a case-by-case basis. And then the last one, you hit right on it, with respect to drug testing. We are doing drug testing. We are going to use the same panel, but a transit, drug screening panel, that a Transitional Housing provider down in Lancaster, Tenfold is what it's called. They've been using it for many, many years with great success. And our parameters are, you know, if you are in a treatment program and you are in outpatient treatment program, and you are able to demonstrate, you've been able to get yourself there, you will continue to get yourself there, we can accept that individual's referral. We are not currently, when we opened in January, never say never, but we are not currently in a position, we will not be able to accept individuals who are in active addiction, who have not begun the treatment process. Just that we are not medical providers, we're not able to do that. And with regard to mental health, we simply are working with different healthcare providers in the area to identify mental health counseling resources for our, our participants.
One final question, if you don't mind. You said, how, at what point, how are you ramping up your occupancy?
Yes, absolutely. So we have, for the first year, I'm not prepared to commit that we're gonna go this slow after the first year, but there was a time when I said, when we open up in January, we're gonna open up with all fifty-eight units full. And then I came to my senses and said, or maybe we should see how it's going, and then, you know, ramp up. So our board has approved, we will open with ten units in January, add two each quarter. Our budget is based on one point seven five people per room, so that ten people in January will be seven to eighteen people with family members, add two each quarter. Except in addition to that, and I don't remember, we mentioned this in our, in our application, in addition to that, we already have an hand-on view with UPMC, such that in addition to those ten, twelve, fourteen, and sixteen rooms, we have another two rooms that will be constantly full as respite housing for unhoused individuals that are being discharged from the emergency room or the hospital otherwise, and are being seen by the UPMC Central PA Street Medicine Team. Those individuals will only be with us for eight, four to eight weeks at a time because that's UPMC's program, and they will cycle through. So it's really twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen for the units. And we are committed to, at a minimum, continuing that pattern. We would much rather, you know, see our funding grow and escalate that pattern, but we're prepared for sustainability model to continue that pattern of adding two units.
And what is your annual operating budget?
One point six five million for twenty twenty-six. Our board has approved, this is more information than you asked for, our board initially approved budget of one point eight. We went back and looked at our numbers, and we're in at about one point six five million that first year. But I should have said one point eight would have been the accurate response. Primarily, primary drivers of that being staff, in this order, staffing costs, utility costs for the facility, and food costs.
And that's all through fundraising?
Fundraising and some local grants. So yeah, yes, fundraising, raising broadly to fund, yeah. Thank you.
Those are great questions, and good answers to. I can't hear your own question. I got a couple questions. One, just a visual, where are you actually located? Kind of get a fix for where your facility be located.
Absolutely. So you go down Market Street away from the city. You go by the former Bishop McDevitt on the left.
Yeah.
You curve around with that, I think it's a cemetery right there at the end of the street. You curve around, and we're probably another two tenths of a mile on your right. You would never know, there's a little road called.
Is that park that used to have a pool, they filled the pool with?
The old bedroom.
Okay, yeah.
We back up to that, you're absolutely right, thank you.
All right, that's one question. And two, are you gonna have any overnight staff?
Yes, we will have, Ellen and I were just talking about, we're in the midst of hiring for their staff right now. We are, we will have a staff presence twenty-four seven. And we are, our overnight staff are called resource staff, but they are essentially our front desk staff, they are our eyes and ears overnight.
So there'll be?
Yes.
Staff overnight?
Yep, absolutely.
We also have a closed-circuit video monitoring system.
Okay.
Do you currently have transportation resources?
We have, we have an impractical resource. We have access to a fifteen-passenger mini-bus, which is just for them. It's not a very good answer, it's not cost-effective. It was openated with the building. But that's it. I don't think we've ever driven it.
Do you own or use the building?
We are incredibly grateful to be the beneficiaries of a zero-dollar lease. So our board chair purchased the property in his individual capacity and donates its use to the location.
Interesting.
So that's why we have, obviously, the utility and the operating costs, but we do not pay rent at all, which is incredible. Which is what allows us to operate the building of the heck of a thing.
Because your operating expenses seem very low, and I was wondering if that component's.
That component's not in there, that's why, yeah.
One quick question, so where do you have to be your referrals come from?
So they will be coming from, they have to be referred by a public agency or a nonprofit that works with unhoused individuals or families. So we are expecting Dolphin County Human Services, inclusive of Dolphin County Children and Youth Services. We're currently working on our contract to see what happens now. And then an example of other nonprofits, I'm not sure that they will be in the first ten, would be Christian Churches United, who coordinate an entry system for the unhoused, Bethany Christian Services, Catholic Charities, the Y W C A, the Y M C A, and other organizations that work with unhoused individuals.
So if a public safety entity is made aware of homeless family, for whatever reason, they can make the referral to lease fire, E M S?
Absolutely. We are just constrained by, you know, I'll be transparent with this group, those first ten, you know, we aren't gonna just open it up and say, oh, specialty referrals, because we'll end up with sixty or a hundred referrals, and we don't want to be unrealistic and mislead people. So we are really targeting our conversations on that first round with Human Services, with Children and Youth Services, with Christian Churches United, to have a finite number. Another example that I expect to see in our first round is, I'm going to get the title of the program role, but the Harrisburg School District Parenting Teens Program, those teens are eighteen and nineteen-year-olds, they're not minors. But my understanding is roughly fifty percent of those teens are unhoused. So we would like to see ourselves be a resource there too. So it's just another example of where referrals may come from.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Yes, would it be possible as part of the application process? I love to know who he is. Would you not ask applicants to submit their board of directors in your nonprofit?
It's obviously right here, like, I think it's first name, I'm sure.
Right.
So the program guidelines do ask applicants to provide?
Would you like us to? See?
So, information. Response to that question. I spent a little. Love the food. I'd like to see on your board.
See, CMU?
Yeah, man.
On their board, personally.
Welcome, gentlemen. We have fifteen minutes. Let's go with you. And as for the presentation, it'll be about ten minutes, a horn stop, so we can ask you, I'll find that for the class. So if you don't mind introducing yourselves and telling us what your project is.
Sure. So I'm Patrick Slattery, I'm the CEO and Executive Director for CMU, doing business as pathways forward. And?
I'm Bob Keel, I'm Director of Finance.
So this is our second year, mine, and we appreciate your time. And I think I knew this last year, but I'll reiterate it. Volunteer a lot of hours to read through a lot of packets. It's really incredible that you guys take all this time to invest in the community, so that's no small feat, especially the volume of applicants. So our project, I think, is pretty straightforward, and my way of background, so Dolphin County actually created CMU thirty-five years ago, nineteen ninety. So we just celebrated our thirty-fifth anniversary. And so we're actually a subcomponent unit of Dolphin County, so we're technically a municipal, we sit on the Dolphin County books. So we're probably one of, I think, only two agencies in the Commonwealth that has this sort of unique status of being a subcomponent unit of the county, but also a five-one-see free nonprofit, so we can seek out funding like this. But we're also supported by the county, and we're created by the county. And so obviously, they're a very important partner. So we've been contracting, as you saw in the previous packet, we've been contracting for Dolphin County for as long as we've existed to serve as the base service unit for the county. So we keep what's called delegated functions for the county. So we do things that the county would otherwise have to do, but they have delegated those functions, plus by way of contract, and also incorporating us as our own entity. So we have our own nonprofit board, and it's our fiduciary board, but we partner obviously very strongly with the county because we serve them, that's our main customer. And obviously, all the people that we serve. So I'm gonna try and keep things brief to keep it moving. And I'll just wanna illuminate one thing, which is kind of a sad illumination, but important. In the proposal, we reference serving about five thousand people. We're at some numbers, and to date, we're at six thousand three hundred and seven unique individuals that we serve across all of Dolphin County. So every kind of looking family of the county, we serve people in those facilities. It's a big number for us. That really illuminates the need, and also focuses on the fact that we need people to help them. So we're a people business. So we, our goal in the proposal is to hire fifteen new colleagues. Those fifteen new colleagues can serve another almost six hundred people, about five hundred seventy-five more people we can serve throughout Dolphin County. In order to do that, you need infrastructure. We do all of our documentation on our laptops. And so we need a system that is good and handle the volume of service documents that we have to do. So anytime we sit and meet with someone, we have to document it. I shouldn't even do that, it's clicky-clack on the laptop. And so we need all the servers and switches and hard drives and laptops and smartphones to work really well because we don't have a big margin. So we have to be really efficient with our time, we can't, we can't miss a beat. If the laptop's down, that's a problem. If the server's down, that's a big problem. And so for a nonprofit, keeping up with infrastructure is tough. It's just hard to stay current, like the big, more moneyed for-profit companies can invest in IT a lot better than we can. So these sorts of proposals and these sorts of funding are so important to kind of just keep us at least close to optimal performance. So that's really important for us. And these are stark realities in a climate of funding problems. And I'm sure the state budget impasse is not news to anyone here. That was not good for us, still actually haven't been paid for our county contract because the money flows from the state to the county to us. So we're still waiting on that payment. So that puts a hardship on us and on our profits across the Commonwealth. But the bigger thing, long-term for us, is that reimbursement rates for the services that we provide are not planned to go up. And so our funding is relatively level, but our expenses keep climbing because of healthcare and wages and electric and you name it. We suffer the same inflationary pressures that everybody else suffers from funding. Reimbursement stays relatively flat, which means margins continue to dip, which means we have to find money to fill those voids while we're here. So a lot of this that's in the proposal is, you know, checking the boxes, answering the questions, getting to the details, a lot of logistics and numbers and things like that. And for me as the CEO, and Bob as the finance guy, it's very easy for us to just get caught up in that, just grinding, grinding, trying to make everything work, make sure the lights stay on. But behind that are people, right? So those six thousand three hundred and seven people are not people we import from somewhere. We don't go screw them up with a butterfly net. They're people who live in all of our communities across Dolphin County. So they're our neighbors, and people we see at church, and people we see at the ballgame. These are folks that live amongst us that we're helping. And so I try to come out of that, looking at the numbers and look at people. So I can have a story of one of our clients that should help give a little bit of clarity on the type of work we're doing, and for. And for anonymity sake, it's, it's Kristen Caitlin, not actually her name, but, but it's easier to have. So Caitlin began her journey with Pathways Forward in February of twenty twenty-four. Caitlin has severe intellectual disabilities, autism, a seizure disorder, and she's non-verbal. So I'm a parent of two boys, I remember when they were born, first thing, I, like most parents, ten fingers, ten toes, man. Like, are they going to be healthy? Um, and then the first time they say dad, I'm a mama, right? So when I hear stories like this and you see something like non-verbal and lots of other disabilities, it really kind of brings it home, right? Can't imagine if you've never heard "I love you" from your child. You know, and this is what this family, um, is, is dealing with. And unfortunately for Caitlin, her mother passed away, who was her main caregiver, and she went to live with her biological father, stepmother, and four siblings. So an already busy household, the transition, surprisingly, was very difficult for her. Uh, the family faced major administrative hurdles, particularly with social security and death benefit, death benefit related issues, uh, which delayed her access to the services that she really needed. Um, despite these obstacles, Caitlin's family did everything they could to support her. Caitlin requires surprising constant supervision, uh, and has experienced significant behavioral challenges, including food-related behaviors, physical aggression, property destruction, difficulty sleeping, times where behaviors could be intense, placing strain on the family. So you can imagine mom, dad, you know, four, four other kids, very challenging household to start with. And, uh, so the moment things really changed for Caitlin was when she was able to receive a community living waiver. So we work in the intellectual developmental disability side, and we work with state funding for waivers, different types of funding mechanisms to Medicaid. And she was able to ask, access a community living waiver with our support, Pathways Forward. We pave the way, now each set of path that we connect people with all the resources that they need. That's achieving a lot of our, our work. Um, we located a rest at home for her. In just a few days, Caitlin began to show encouraging improvements. This positive momentum helped her qualify for yet another waiver, solidated waiver, allowing her to move into a residential home with some, with the same provider for more long-term stability. Uh, so today Caitlin lives in a single-family home where she has truly begun to thrive. She has adjusted beautifully to her new environment, family stays closely connected, business off as it can, meaning the regular communication with her support team. Uh, Caitlin's family shares deep gratitude for the opportunity to see her flourish in a safe, supportive setting tailored to her needs. Uh, with the right environment and the right resources, Caitlin is now a calmer, much more stable, successful, happier at the existence. And, and it's a profound story, but it's not unusual for us. This is what we do every day. It comes in the form of folks that have significant mental health issues, that they're struggling with a lot of housing insecurity. It's not news to anyone here in Dolphin County, and, uh, and also folks with intellectual development disabilities and autism. So that is another big area that we work with. So that's just one story out of six, six thousand three hundred and seven, so you can just imagine what our day-to-day looks like. Within the proposal, I'll just real briefly kind of tie it all together, um, because if you, when you look at the budget, you know, these things may sound strange, because it's a sand server and this sort of switch, and I don't have my IT guy, I can't even explain it better than I can. But, but the, the sort of, the, the point is that, uh, when you look at all those items, they all interweave to create something better for the people that we serve. So this is page twenty-six on the pencil pad in front of you. And, uh, and so when you see it, the IT specific things, the sand package, the laptops, um, the beam, which is another part of our IT infrastructure, WatchGuard, also part of our infrastructure, APC Smart, ABC Online, these are all IT, um, all part of our IT infrastructure. And then the things that are more easily to understand, maybe the CCTV safety, security camera system, right? So, so if you think about, you know, hybrid TV, laptops, those laptops run on servers and such, which is a sand. So we need those to work well. We work with people that have really not experienced often great things in their lives, and they've been in really tough situations, both from an emotional perspective, but also where they've been. They don't, they're not always in the nicest of physical plants, as we would say in the business. So having fresh paint on the walls, that's why the painting project, like, how a nice place to go and get services. You shouldn't have all kinds of dings on the walls and carpet that looks like it's twenty-five years old, which it is. And so, so they should come into an area that's reasonably nice to get the services, and so that's why that's in there, because we think it's important. Uh, even the, the safety, security system is both for our safety and for theirs, so they have a safe place to sort of things when they come for an intake. We want to have cameras that help protect their things and protect us, uh, that's something that has been on our to-do list for a long time. And, uh, so that's why all these things are interweaved to provide the best care for the folks that are really in desperate need of our services. So all these things sort of, I think, fold together pretty nicely. We appreciate your support and caring us, and I hope I kept on time. Happy to take any questions.
Question? Where do you find fifteen employees?
Yeah, that's a really great question. We, we've been doing a lot of testing and retesting a little bit, um, not before you with my world, but you know, uh, best practice, right? So, uh, a lot of companies do the, we put the job out in the world, and then we wait for, uh, for applicants. We put it on Indeed or wherever, CareerBuilder, whatever. So we use Indeed, do some things on LinkedIn as well, but so we're recruiting from the local market, also in the really tri-state area. So we actually, all of our secretaries do sourcing. So we actually source candidates, not supposed to just put it out there, wait for applications. We actually go onto Handshake and other platforms to like, to source recruiting. Um, and not only, we had some good success with, with one side of our division. And trying to fold that over to the other side to see if it has equal results, because that's part of this program, actually. geared towards getting the next division to get their staff up, their, their weight. But, yeah, so it's.
It's a very challenging, well, employment market now, and I know that in social service work, there's just incredible change. So.
Yes.
Fifteen employees is really ambitious.
Yeah, well, don't we look ambitious? We didn't, I mean, we, we did, we did, we met gain to almost fifteen in the other division, so we can do it. Um, it's just, it takes a lot of work, and, and we don't pay.
Right.
Fantastically.
Yes.
So, um, that's just a prepared person, but it's fifty thousand of school loans, making maybe forty-five thousand dollars a year. It's a tough math. Yeah, it's tough math, but the people come to us because they care about helping.
In, in your proposal, um, you listed your, your equipment needs, and I think in there you also mentioned two, two vans?
First.
Maybe not.
Oh, I think that may be this, uh, IT language.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. But, but the, the, the question, and you've been there for almost thirty years.
The Pathways Forward CMU is thirty-five, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, most of the work done on Cameron Street, or does the staff have the ability using those laptops to actually do stuff out in the field?
Yeah, that's a great question, and, and you're accurate, and that's a good, good, good assumption on your part. Our Camera Street office, which is our main hub, Elizabethville in Northern Dolphin is our satellite. All of our mental health clinic case managers are in this field most of the time, so that most of the time they're at someone's home, or where they're working, or in the park, I mean, they'll meet anywhere, they'll meet where the client is. So we go, uh, anywhere and can to see them, so they're out on the road.
And, and the building, um, you said it needs painted, and it's, if you haven't had carpet in there in twenty-five years, it's, it's time to be replaced.
We, we're, we're acutely aware, both, uh, nasally and visually.
I, I helped plan the first floor.
Did you really?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're aware, so if folks come in, they intake with us, but then they go back home, and then we try to go out to them to make sure they're getting the things that they need, so our folks are.
And, uh, so you still, primarily, those are your two places, Cameron Street and, um, Up County.
Yes.
You don't have any other satellites?
No.
Any other place?
Our satellites are where the clients are.
Very good, good.
Your relationship with Connections?
So they're relatively new, um, but we have a monthly meeting with them to go over logistics and kind of transferring clients between each other. So, so Connections is the twenty-four hour mental health, uh, emergency care. So we think like emergency center for people with mental health issues, and they reside in the first floor of our building. And, uh, and so when folks come in with emergent mental health, these, Connections does a good job of getting them stabilized. Sometimes they'll come across a lobby to us and intake with us because they need longer-term pain management services, and that's how the two of us work together. And then sometimes our folks have trouble when we send them over, pack the Connections and go back and forth.
They're separate, totally separate agency.
Two separate companies, like Connections is a for-profit out of Arizona, not a nonprofit.
Seems like a, a pretty good arrangement, though, having them co-located in your facility, it seems like it would.
Agreed, yeah, it was good, good, I mean, we, we had embraced them wholeheartedly, very.
He's, he's, he used to have a, um, part-time IT person, but I don't know, do you still have it, or do you have a full-time one?
We have a full-time person.
I was going to say, you buy new ones.
We have up for a full-time, uh, director, and then we have a help desk person, we're recruiting for, actually, you know.
Yeah, is there a top priority in your request? I mean, is there something like immediate need, or, you know, this would make us much safer right away, or?
Yeah, I tried to prioritize them in the budget, so these are a bit in rank order. Um, so the sand package is an absolute must, uh, the safety, security system, absolutely must, must, and the laptops. So those are easily our top three technology concerns. Everything else, you know, it is, falls down a little bit lower on the list, uh, but they're all important because they all intertwine, but if you had to rank order them, I can.
Thank you.
Anything else? Were you such a, such a large, well, I think, six thousand, six thousand plus, and you thought what you're doing?
Yeah, thank you. The, the number that really blows your mind, hundred and twenty-four thousand service docs. Hundred twenty-four thousand documented certifications, yeah, our, that's my team, that's, that's not me, that's, that's my staff.
Guys did good work. Thank you for wanting to talk, thank you for being here.
Yeah, we appreciate your time.
Thanks, hopefully you do. You're good, you're good. Thank you so much.
You too.
Same travels, Steve.
Thank you.
All right.
Miracle.
Good evening, how you doing?
Hello.
How you doing?
Good to be here.
Great.
We appreciate you being here, we've got fifteen minutes to spend with you. Ten minutes for your project is, if you'd like that, I'd be interested to ask you some questions. Don't mind my, um, introducing myself, and you can have a floor.
My name is Timothy White, um, I represent my mother, first, uh, Marsha Curry, she's the director of a miracle for sure. I am her right hand, we have been operating a miracle for sure, it's an ex-offender re-entry program here in Harrisburg. That's kind of our main population we serve, we help men and women when they come home from state prison. We have been doing that for fourteen years. We have grown, we have an office on the corner of Eighteenth and State in Harrisburg. Um, it's pretty much a family business, but we do have a couple employees that's not family. During COVID, fast forward, during COVID, uh, the homeless population in the crisis in Harrisburg just, just, just grew so crazy that, uh, we were at the forefront of the conversations in what do we do on the homeless, unhoused population? And one of the first things we did was opened our doors for showers. Every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we let unhoused people come to our office to take showers. Um, and that was kind of like our first sprinkling of, of getting hands with this population. Then they got to talking about the eighty-three bridge project and how they were, uh, looking to get rid of tent city, of the population of the homeless people living outside underneath the bridge around the corner from Penda. Um, so we were in a bunch of meetings, and we just, we, my mother, Marsha, just kept saying yes to everything. And, um, when everyone else was saying no, she was saying yes. So we got to the conversation of eventually purchasing a, a piece of land in Harrisburg, and specifically designating it for, for unhoused. And fast forward again, two, five months ago, August, um, I believe we we secured the funding before that to buy the land, that's all it was. So we bought three point five acres of land off of Cameron Street, it's, it's fairly close to the old, uh, community. So now we have three point five acres of land that we created a miracle community, is the name of the, the neighborhood. And it started as a vacant lot, and we've been building it ever since. We currently, on the first day when we opened, we moved in fifteen people from the other community. And literally every day since, we've been moving people in and out. To date, we currently have about a hundred and ten tents up, because it is a tent community, there is no brick and mortar on land. Uh, we are housing-first model, basic, uh, through donations, through America for Sure's website and our support system, we, we have been able to buy all these tents and cots and pillows and tarts, things and things and things. We have showers on site, we have a food pantry on site, we have a, a shed that we turned into a base of operations, where we're, um, providing case management, and pretty much we couldn't even have power brung to the lot until we had a, a building, PPNL rules. So they accepted the shed as a building, so that's how we were able to get a landline, power, so we have power on site. We do not have water on site, we were using during the summer, fall months, we were attached to a fire hydrant and running a hose over to the land, that's how we were getting drinking water and bathing water and all of those things. We currently have three porta potties, um, for the hundred-ish people, and we have one for staff that we rent monthly. Fast forward again, two weeks ago, uh, Harrisburg City cut off the fire hydrant, so we currently do not have running water right now because of the winter months, they, 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 uh, pulled it off the, the fire hydrant. So America for Sure has a box truck that we always have and use, so I pretty much have a two hundred and fifty gallon container in that truck that we fill up on, at our office, and I take it to the second. So we've been doing that, uh, we, we've been pretty much bootstrapping this whole project. I don't get paid, I've been there every day, all day since we bought the thing, my mom has been there. We are looking for help to continue to grow this amazing project. There is nothing like this anywhere near here. I don't know if you guys have seen it on the news or any pictures or anything, but the grid model that we have, I actually seen it in California, via the internet, uh, so I kind of took my inspiration from California, how they had their, had a, a, a community set up, and then I just multiplied it here. The address of the community is eleven twenty-five South Ninth Street, Harrisburg, one seven one four. But each tent has an apartment number, so the ways. So the way it's set up is there's rows and columns, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. So I could live at B, eleven twenty-five South Ninth Street, apartment B four. So we have the very structure. We have a spreadsheet. We, we have an invitation that we provide to people who want to move in. We don't call it an application. We call it an invitation. So depending on their specific situation and if they're ready to live outside. Because everybody that's homeless isn't ready to live outside. But we did have, you know, we had that community that, the old community was there for years and people, those people choose to live outside. So our phone has been ringing off the hook every day for people who are losing their places and needing a place to stay. And now we are in hatching to keep people like off the street. Put them in a good community and we have security cameras. We have pseudo-security. The residents have stepped up and they communicate as best as they can with me. It's, it's low entry. We take people as they are. So addicts are unfortunately still drinking, still amusing. Those vices do not bar you from being able to live here. What I tell people is the vice won't get you kicked out. Your actions and your, what you do after you're inebriated will, could get you kicked out. Like if you, if you sit here and drink all day, you start fights. It'll get you kicked out, not sit there drinking all day. But we have mental health services coming. We have a schedule. We have a calendar. We have mental health services. We have drug and alcohol services. We have churches. We have nonprofits. We have private people pulling up. It's a lot to manage. So we're, we're trying to control this influx of community people who want to help so bad. Because before people would have leftover pizzas at a party they were at and then take it to tent city and just leave it on the curb. So it's just, or they clean out their basement and, and bring it all to the tent city and just leave it on the curb. People just jump in there and grab it, which is real chaotic. So even the best intentions, you know, miss the mark sometimes. So we have been controlling that process. We don't allow people. You've got to contact us first. We'll say, no, we don't want the stuff in your basement. No, we don't want your five leftover pizzas. But if you, if you want to work with us to schedule a meal, of course we can do that. So we've been doing that and I've been doing that. My role is the director of miracle community currently. So we have built a pavilion with, with a hard top on it. And I just wrapped it in plastic and tarps recently to, to keep some of the heat in. We have propane heaters that we're using. I have two, so we need more. We also have a secondary pavilion that is used for cooking. The ultimate goal of the five-year plan, whatever plan, is brick and mortar, big building. As much as I love the tent, low entry side, I want to keep a certain section of tents, but eventually want to have a building on site in this lane.
Do you have some questions? Questions? Go ahead. Yeah. Do the people, the residents there, do they get any kind of healthcare that comes in? Or can they schedule through you healthcare out of the community separate?
Yes and yes. So one of the organizations that comes to the site, I believe is UPMC somebody regularly. They have a very strong street outreach team over there. So there are people coming almost daily if someone needed.
And do people eat on, if, if you have a hundred people?
Yep.
If you have a hundred people that are right now, you know, eat on some kind of regular basis? Like you said, you have a pavilion that has some heaters in it. That's to keep them warm, but if they wanted to cook, cook a hamburger.
Yes.
Is there?
Yes.
A place there for a hamburger?
Yes. Yes. The second pavilion has hot plates and air fryers and anything you can plug in, we got over there. We got two microwaves. We got a.
Who does the dirty dishes?
They do. They do. My mom is on it because I'm not.
About the organization itself, a miracle for sure. Is it a nonprofit? Is it a for-profit? How many about your company? What is it?
It's a possible one seed, written up.
And who's on the board? Who are the board members or who manages it or?
I can't name everybody. We do have a board. I'm sorry. I can't name them. Yeah, I can't, I can't name all of them right now.
That's okay. And then your grant is for like infrastructure.
Yes.
Which would be, you know, permit to the property. Electric, water, those, those utility services.
We are currently paying them.
And then the ownership of the property, who, who owns the property?
A miracle for sure, nonprofit. Yep, we're looking to not, we're, we're looking to have water all year round and not turn it off because winter time. And, and help with the builds of that electric. We've only been doing this five months, so it's kind of hard to estimate exactly, you know, operating cost, but yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but do I understand that the county gave miracle for sure the money to purchase the property?
Yes, we received a grant from the county to purchase it.
So that is a grant. It's not?
It is not a loan.
Okay. It is a grant.
Yep, it is a loan. Yes.
Okay. Um, I, so you're looking to add porta potties and showers and you have a hundred tents. And what is your capacity and should you receive the monies for this? Will the porta potties and the showers that you were asking for funding for be sufficient to supply the community for the foreseeable future? Or are you going to have, be adding enough residents or more and more residents so that you will require more than what it is that you're asking?
Great question. Nope, I'm at capacity. I think the hundred and ten, hundred and fifteen mark is no more than that. Would not be growing to two hundred, two hundred and fifty. No. The system is set up and if I'm not mistaken, well, no, we're renting the porta potties. So we don't own them. So we're asking for help with that cost. They service them every other day.
Right.
But on Friday to Monday, it's a little sketchy out there. So more is what we're asking. Like I said, we got the three, hopefully double that or, or sustain that. Because right now we're Peter to pay Paul from other services and other things that we have going on for sure.
Sustainability for the, for the site, requesting grants for like what I would consider a normal operating expense. Do you have other sources of income? Do you do fundraising? Do you have, where do you develop your income? So for your normal operating expenses, like portable toilets and utilities, this long-term sustainability other than grants, how do you plan to continue to be able to keep it as a sustainable project?
Okay, other than the other grants we're applying for, social media, our website, we have been able to successfully raise, I believe, like twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand installations in the last five months already. And anytime we ask for our supporters to help, they usually come through.
So the donations then would cover payroll, insurance, like that's like labor expenses too?
No.
What covers your labor and your operational expenses?
Nothing right now. I'm.
So you're just, you, oh, okay. So you're.
Yeah, when I'm at, when I'm at work, my nonprofit, I'm managing and getting paid that way. Like it's not a separate pay for me to be at the community versus being at my office. No, not yet. So right now I just put in office hours and I put in community hours.
I understand. So Ameri, so the miracle community is a separate nonprofit from America?
A miracle for sure.
They're two separate nonprofits?
No, no. A miracle community is under miracle for sure. All right.
So the twelve thousand dollars that you're asking for to cover the audit is only for the miracle community? It's not part of the audit for the motherships?
Yes, correct. Correct.
Well, Tonya, anything?
I do not. Thanks.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you. Appreciate you for your work.
For your hard work.
Nice meeting you.
Okay.
I gave everybody.
You did.
They brought the problems. They brought their own. They got.
Okay.
Thanks, Michael. You can also meet you, Michael.
Do you want another copy? Okay, because I have extra.
He's Michael's just mean.
You can take a shot. He takes a shot. Shot or a bow.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Fifteen minutes to spend with you. My presentation will last about ten minutes and we can pause and ask any questions and then we'll get right into the project.
I am Denise Hill. I serve as the executive director of Better Housing Association.
Jessica Vinton, I am the director of development for Better Housing Association.
Welcome.
Down button.
It's the down button depending on how you're planning.
Oh, there we go.
You got it?
Yeah. So our organization provides transitional housing to single-family parents who are experiencing homelessness. So our transitions program, individuals are able to come into our program and stay with us for up to one year. And they receive wraparound services, intensive case management and referral to services that they will need based on an individual. All right. So here you will see some background information on BHA as an organization and what we have accomplished over the last thirty-six years. One thing that I wanted to highlight, we started with one property and one by one we bought and now obtained the two hundred blocks of Common Street in Allison Hill. So we are rooted in the Allison Hill community and we are committed to sustainability. So while our, our services are transitional, our commitment to the city and to those we serve are very, very long-term. And I just wanted to highlight too, this is a picture of the before and after the block. We do take houses that were dilapidated or inflated and we rehab them. So our entire block is rehabbed buildings. So here you will see the need for the transitions project and to sustain it. So as you'll see, rent is too high, salaries and incomes are too low and then affordable housing stock is just insufficient. So you'll see across the three at the top there, we have calculated based on minimum wage, some of our participants would need to work up to about a hundred and forty-five hours per week to afford fair money and rent without the subsidy of them being able to come into our program. That's what they would be looking at. So they just are not able to afford rent at where it is. There's no legislation that exists. And then when you add mental health struggles for either the participant or someone in the family, we are just seeing more and more families, they are facing housing instability and or homelessness. So we often serve the most vulnerable members of the community. And things are hard, even if folks have everything working for them. So as you see, we statistics at the bottom here, our participants often scored very, very high on the ACE score as the adverse childhood experience test. So that's directly tied to childhood trauma that's experienced. I mean, it correlates with the barriers to housing and as well as the, the continued need for supportive services. So we look at it as when parents come into BHA now, we can potentially change the trajectory of the children who are in our program. So the two ways to enter into transitions, we have partnerships both with the coordinated entry system for Dolphin County and then Dolphin County Children in Youth. So the coordinated entry system, we do not share anything. We do not maintain a waitlist. We let the coordinated entry system for children to know when we have a unit available and what families size it fits. And they send us the next available person on their list so that we are able to blindly accept the student that's the unit. And we have a longstanding partnership with children in youth. Therefore, if the concern to close the case is only housing, so if it's not neglect or abuse, the family is able to move into our program and then eventually close their case and then move towards self-protection. And we are the only housing program in the county that's the housing program that serves single fathers who have custody of their children. So here you'll see some more information and we just wanted to highlight that we do have a very diverse funding stream. So through our grants, we have government contracts, we have business and corporate donations as well as individual donations. We have membership churches that also contribute to us and then we have fundraisers each year. I just wanted to highlight the sustainability of not only the organization and our operations, but also the level of service that we provide to those who serve. And that's how these funds will be most helpful and utilized because it will help us continue to serve the families here in Allison Hill and anywhere from that county. It also helps us to keep up with ongoing challenges such as cuts to food assistance as well as a need for rental assistance for those who are in a situation. Here I wanted to highlight the, that each plan is tailored. So every family that comes in has an individualized goal plan. It can't be cut, cutter, because each family comes to us with a different set of barriers. So our family advocates, which are our case managers, work with each family to identify what those needs are and then refer them to services once we have kind of quelled the housing crisis that they are in when they come to us. So far, our family advocates have helped individuals learn how to drive, finish their CNA certification, won their real estate license within the last year. They've worked to repair family relationships and then access to educational, mental health and medical resources. Here you'll see information on the expected outcomes of the program. And we wanted to acknowledge over the past year, it has been difficult to reach these high numbers. Some of the areas we've done great in, but there are a number of reasons why the statistics don't exactly. don't exactly match the outcomes. So it fluctuates each year because we are meeting families where they are. So while it may seem like a lower number statistically for an outcome, it's a huge move forward for that individual family. So it's hard to kind of put those types of things within a percentage. Also, we have, we face ever-changing regulations at all levels, both government and different funders. And then just a while back, we were talking about the income within the community, access to community housing. But I will say that all our dismissals are related to safety concerns. None of our participants are dismissed. They all leave their fine permanent housing and everything is due to a safety concern. And then lastly, I just wanted to make sure that we highlighted inside how the local gaming, the local share funds are a good fit for BHA and vice versa. Our residents almost always stay in Dolphin County to work and to live. So the money that will be going in from the gaming grant to BHA is kind of cycling right back through the county because when folks are still staying right here in Dolphin County. Also, there are two categories, the health and the public interest. And transitions, this particular program does fit both of those. And then lastly, as you'll see on the final bullet here, our programming supports populations that are part of the casinos locally.
Anybody have a question?
Yeah. The houses, how many houses did you say?
We have twelve houses, twenty-four units. And then we have, we also have six scattered site units, so we have thirty units total. But twenty-four right there on Wildberry and then.
All of them went through some type of rehab?
Yes.
Was rehab done by people in the city or outside the city?
Yes, so we have a part-time property maintenance person on site three days a week. But we have also used local contractors to come in because sometimes we have to take a unit, you know, and rehab it from the studs. Three of the townhouses, they were actually torn down completely and built up from the ground. So they're, they were rebuilt several years ago.
Behind those, we're one of the only organizations too that has green space available for our families. So those townhouses that Keith mentioned, there was those houses and then one behind, they were torn down. And behind it, we have a fenced in yard with playground for kids and an area with some picnic tables. So we have that and then another green space on the other side of the street. That's just smaller, but we do have some place for the kids to.
Somewhere in your organization, I'm curious how a case manager, two, three?
Yes.
And are they also responsible for creating plans for each individual?
Yes.
Household?
Yes, so upon intake, everyone gets an individual goal plan with their family advocate.
And then, you know, is there like a review of the pay, pay stub so that, you know?
Yes, yes.
A person's not making a million dollars and only giving you like a hundred dollars a week?
Yes, yes, we do income verifications monthly. And that is because the program fee that they pay to us is no more than thirty percent of their gross annual income. So that is how they are paying to be into the program for the unit. And we have, even if a family comes in with zero income, they have a minimum allowance.
That is also, it's kind of, you know, people talk about the skin in the game type of thing and that's kind of for that reason. But also to help them learn, the participants learn, you know, how to pay rent. So it's through the first of the month, the couple day grace period if necessary, but it's, it's not rent, it's program fee. But it helps that as that's part of the learning process too.
Well, I didn't see a program fee in the budget that you submitted as far as funding sources. For as far as your overall budget, but I just wanted to confirm that you're not really looking for money for capital expenditure. You're just looking for administrative, overall support for your operating budget.
Right.
And we don't put the program fee into the, the program budget because we actually hold on to it and it becomes a savings plan for our, our folks. So once they leave, they've got money with them that they can take with. So it's not a source of income for us. It is, so that's why it's not in the budget.
And they're aware that the money that you're paying for rent is going into an account that's available to them?
Yes.
So if you didn't get the full seventy-five thousand dollars, what part of the budget that you have submitted would the grant be?
We would probably, well, what we, our highest, our highest expenses are the salaries, which is the case management salaries, and then it's also the housing costs, like the maintenance, the upkeep, the, the utilities, that kind of thing. So I would say that probably that would be, that would go to one of those things. But the, the biggest, the biggest draw of this program is the one-on-one case management from our family advocates. And so it's the most important to make sure that we always have that funded because they're the ones that are doing the work with the participants.
So how often are you able to admit new residents? How often are people graduating from the program? And you're able to then train the units over and bring in new residents?
Our average length of stay is about nine months. And they have up to one year, it's a three-month phase approach. So every three months, our reviews does is we make sure that they are hitting benchmarks. The reality is some just don't need a full year. So once they are able to get on their feet and obtain permanent housing, then they will exit. But average length of stay is nine. We don't maintain one, we immediately will just send out for the referral and then have someone. So we try to do between thirty and forty-five days from when we get keys handed in to when the family.
Seven forty-six.
Alright, alright, thank you.
You gave us great information.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry to cut you off.
You're fine, I'm impressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you've done a great job on that block, it's beautiful up there.
Thank you.
You hear any questions? Actually, some of the things you're asking is what I was curious about in the house, it all works.
The next one's being completed.
Being completed.
I think a lot of structures. One of my, my lifelong family friends reacted. Beacon Clinic? Thank you, sir.
Any questions, welcome.
Thank you.
We have fifteen minutes to hear your proposal. Probably Eric down there. We'd like to, in ten minutes, we'll do a hard stop for the weekend. Ask this and question, if that's okay.
Thank you.
If you don't mind just short introduction of the project.
Sure, I'm Matt Griffin, I'm a board member and a family physician currently working at State Health.
And I'm Judy Dillon, I retire from State Health, from Community Health, and I'm the Chair of the Board of Advocates.
Welcome.
So Beacon Clinic, we just celebrated our tenth year in existence. We've actually moved in the last year to a new medical facility, which has really helped service to our. And so we are here in Harrisburg, not that far from this location. Deborah McLean is our Executive Director, but she is recovering from an injury, so she couldn't be here tonight. So Judy and myself.
Down.
Down. So we are a safety net clinic to provide primary healthcare and dermatologic care medications to adults. And our patients come from the Dolphin County and Erie Counties. We serve people who are within three hundred percent of the federal poverty and are in the coverage gap. They can't afford it or are not eligible for any federal or state subsidies. So these are people without any health insurance whatsoever. In 2024, we have twenty-two hundred patient visits with our connections to a pharmacy. It's over six thousand prescriptions because we try to do our very best to provide medications at no cost. Many of our patients have lung disease, arthritis, lung disease, had a lot of chronic diseases not cured for. We have patients from fifty-two countries speaking thirty-seven languages. And seventy-five percent of the patients in Harrisburg would, would be a criteria, live in the Harrisburg area. You know, poverty rate within the Harrisburg area is right around, percent of the residents locally. And the demand for our services have been going up with all the cuts threatened or actual in Medicare, Medicaid, as well as SNAP, because if you now have to spend more money for food, you're not probably going to be able to afford your health insurance or your next round of health insurance. Most of our patients, if they're, they're going to be in the emergency room and they're not going to go to the emergency room until it's really a serious case where it's going to cost a lot more money. Now, as a free clinic, we're on paper charts. Now, I'm old enough to remember and all we had was paper charts. So it makes it very difficult. It makes it difficult to manage our patients. It's very inefficient because we have to double check or triple check and staff on paper. It's hard to see any patterns in labs because you've got printouts of labs, you don't have charts of labs. It's difficult when our patients go somewhere else to be able to get that information. A lot of our volunteers work in different health systems so they can log in and see them, but then we have to print it out and then. Often the medications are different and the patient, what we know and what's in that medical record are different. It makes time consuming for us to generate any type of health trends and medical utilization. And even some of the reports we require to be generally rolled on manually. So that makes it very inefficient. And it's, it's difficult to recruit clinicians as much as clinicians versus nurse practitioners, PAs. Electronic medical record, when they go back and they've never seen a paper chart, they complain about that. An EMR is, is an essential need for us to be able. As you do believe that an electronic medical record, our efficiency can improve if we pass the. By about ten percent. It's not cheap. We've looked for the two health systems in our immediate area to see if they could somehow provide it, but they're both going through significant electronic medical record changes and just don't have the capacity to address our need right now. So as we've looked at electronic medical record system, we have found some that are affordable. We think it will reduce our staff time by thirty percent, improve our safety and care coordination and HIPAA compliance, and it will support security prescribing because right now we're writing prescriptions and writing prescriptions and then dealing with that issue. What we're asking for, and this is our, our priority if, in terms of our funding requests, is fifty thousand dollars for the system and the hardware and the training. The second one is, as you probably well know, going to your doctor, a lot of times you need for diagnostic services such as blood work, x-rays, ultrasound, those are not cheap. We have been relying on, you can see, and last year you can see our expenditures from them, which was forty-six thousand dollars, but they cut us to twenty thousand dollars. That's a dramatic cut. We've done a lot of things with other grant funding to bring, but we, our, our secondary component is for diagnostic services and the budget is built around what we think are lab costs, x-ray costs, and ultrasound costs. The total need is fifty-two thousand dollars a year, our total request is twenty-five thousand. Because we're looking for other grants to, to bring in the remainder of that difference. Oops, I looked the wrong way. And so our total proposal is seventy-five thousand dollars. It's fifty thousand dollars for each of our system and hardware and training, twenty-five thousand dollars of diagnostic service. Our total need is. Well, then we'll, we'll go after other things and we'll have to pare down our requests.
Have you received NAP funding in the past?
We have not.
This was the first year you.
Right.
NAP is a max credit, state checks.
We do have Capital Blue is our partner and has committed to forty thousand dollars if we get funding.
Thank you, Susan. Your presentation, Doc, can anybody?
I have a question. So you provide all these services to all these folks through grants, I mean, how?
Grants and fundraising, we have two major fundraising events a year and then donations and other support. In the, and then the last year Judy and I went out to find a professional grant writer because we were, we needed to be successful in higher groups and higher ranges and partnered with those writers who helped us with this proposal. And we've been quite successful in our partnership with them in the first year, so.
So the amount that you're questioning is just to provide you with electronic management for your patients?
For our patients and then for the diagnostic services, the blood work.
Priority would be the.
The priority is the electronic.
And then would that then allow you to network with other healthcare providers and share those records? So if you receive a patient and they previously treated in another facility, they could train, you could access their records? So the continuity of care would be maintained because you could see the record?
Right. Most current electronic medical records have the national data sharing. So for health information exchange where you can click on that and see. Now, some other smaller systems don't share, but the major players like UPMC and Hershey and Wellstan are using all play in that data exchange.
And you'd have, you'd have access to.
We have access to that.
Now, that was my question. The software?
Yes.
Do, do you know for certain that it interferes as well with whatever UPMC has or Hershey has or?
So they're both, they're both going to have Epic.
Huh?
UPMC has Epic.
Yeah.
And Hershey right now has Cerner, but we're moving to Epic. Wellstan is already on Epic, Penn is on Epic. And we interviewed three different providers of EMRs at this lower cost and ask all these difficult questions and we have two that we're working with. So when we get the funding, we can move right with them to start the process.
I'll tell you aware of it, but you're aware that, but UPMC is Epic and Penn State is, who they use?
They're going to move to Epic, October thirty-first of twenty twenty-six.
And then, it's not, it's not cheap?
It's not cheap, but we're not buying Epic. We're buying a much more affordable and we've negotiated with them to a cost that you can see we can probably with the fifty thousand dollars plus the other money we've got, we can afford it. But we could not afford hundreds of thousands of dollars per provider or per user of the system. So that's what Epic costs, is hundreds of thousands of dollars per user. So we have a much cheaper model, but we don't bill, so we don't have to have all billing elements, right?
Nice, that's amazing, the services.
Yeah, it touches a lot of people.
It's amazing.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Tonya, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
You're trying to turn on to my shop. Isn't he cool?
Yes.
This was the hill side.
Uh huh.
The first hill. Cool dude, right?
Yes.
Look at him smile. Those were good.
He's happy.
Okay.
Closer to look.
Thank you.
We have 15 minutes to spend with you.
Okay.
If you have a presentation, I should pretend minutes for the presentation and hard stop. I manage to ask you some questions.
Okay.
If you don't, don't mind doing some short introduction.
Well, I'm Pastor Jim Person. I have been at St. Mark's Lutheran Church in Colonial Park. We're like next to the osteopathic hospital, if you're familiar with that. I've been there for 18 years now. But it's been a good, good run for me there, with congregation. And this is Evan Williams. Evan, I'll let you introduce yourself, but he's been a big, big help in this whole process we're going through right now.
Well, I get technical, actually, as doctor. I'm a retired superintendent of the Dolphin County School District. Babysitting.
Oh, okay.
And we, my wife and I joined St. Mark's Lutheran Church and we're trying to do our best to make things better.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm glad, glad we're here and thank you for your time.
Yes, really. You're welcome.
So shall we?
Yes, sir.
Sure.
So PowerPoint we put together and kind of interesting, the woman who put this together for us is, we have a little group doing this. She's actually in Romania right now, but she is really interested in this project. And she said if we wanted, she could put together a PowerPoint. And so she was willing to do this, so she sent it to us from Romania. It shows some of the ways we're already involved in the community and some of the things that we're doing. We have a real, I guess, a desire at St. Mark's to be involved in the community, let the community know we're there for them. Members, we want a good relationship with our neighbors, do things to serve them. So we have a number of folks who are involved with the NutriPacks program in the Central Dolphin School District. In fact, my wife and I were just distributing food this afternoon. The picture of the truck there on the left, that's my truck with the Thanksgiving distributions, the one out for NutriPacks this year. The young man on the cart is my grandson, so I get to be the grandpa in this picture. Before he started, was in school all day, he would go with me to help unload the NutriPack trucks. We had a group of men who did that. We also have some folks who go to the schools in the school district to help distribute the food. So that's one of the community services we're very much involved in. We have occasionally, we don't do this every year, but we have occasionally done a backpack distribution where we fill the backpacks with school supplies, invite the community to come. We usually have a picnic meal or something going on at the same time. Invite the community to come and get their backpacks and school supplies. We do a trunk or treat. That's one of the things that our neighbors really take part in. We'll sometimes get, I think, around 200 people or so come through for our trunk or treat. And it's not only Halloween candy and things, but we do hamburgers, hot dogs, smores are one of the big draws. We, we'll fire, campfire, cook smores and everybody loves that. And in addition, our own trunk or treat, then we also have a relationship with E.H. Phillips Elementary School. One of our members is the president of PTO there. And so she got us involved in a sort of a mutual arrangement. We take part in each other's activities. And so we did trunk or treat at E.H. Phillips School. That's a Thanksgiving food collection and that's something we do every year, Thanksgiving and Christmas. We collect food and then at Christmas time, yes, we collect toys. And we have a really good relationship with the Colonial Park Fire Department because I'm also chaplain of the Colonial Park Fire Department. So we have a really good working relationship with them. They collect and donate some toys for our toy distribution at Christmas time. We have taken part in the Chris Kendall Mark in Lingelstown. Another opportunity for us to reach out and tell the Christmas story and make some connection to the community. Christmas caroling for our shut-ins. We have folks who, you know, can't make it to church. They still enjoy the Christmas carols in the Christmas season. So we, we carpool around with some folks in the area and sing Christmas carols. We, and when we also stop at one or two of the nursery homes in the area and sing for the residents there. We had a fellowship night at FNB Field at the Senator's Game, and that was a great way to get folks together. And also we invited, you know, folks, people brought friends, family, a lot of others who weren't just church members at that. Community breakfast is one of our ongoing things that's been going quite well. Second Saturday of each month, from eight to 10, we do a free breakfast for anybody who shows up. The neighbors come in, the church members come in, we get to know each other again. And at the last community breakfast we had, we also did a clothing giveaway. We had members donate clothing and so folks who came for breakfast could take whatever they needed or wanted from the clothing. And that went very well. We have nursery school. A good number of our nursery school students are on scholarships. And, you know, we find that folks, one of their, I guess, quality start for their kids in nursery school. It is a Christian nursery school. They know that when they come, but some of them aren't from normally Christian cultures, but they come from all over the place. But a lot of them are scholarships. And so we do a big bunny breakfast every year. That's a fundraiser for our scholarships so that we can have those kids come to school who might not have a chance to do that otherwise. And in this picture, you can see some of the apartments right across the street from our church. We're surrounded by a couple of those apartment complexes. And that's one of the reasons we wanted to do this project is because there's really not a place with a full-size basketball court or that kind of facility anywhere near the church. There's some little playgrounds and things, but nothing like the facility we want to build. This is our, some of our youth group activities. And again, we have not only church members, but kids from the neighborhood and some of their friends who come. And the picture on the right, they're doing a construction project at our church camp in Milwaukee, Camp Milwaukee in Biglerville. So our youth do service projects. A lot of their ministry is involved in service projects. We just started a Cub Scout path to reach out. And it's in the parking lot between the church and the hospital. And another thing that's, we wanted to be open and public and have folks come and be able to take part in that. This shows our property where the picture on the top. Near the building, the circle there. Years ago, we put some outdoor exercise equipment out. And we'll see folks down there doing some exercise. We have a walking path around the property. So we've been doing some things to try and promote physical wellbeing as well as, you know, the spiritual things that church offers. In the bottom right-hand corner there, what circle is a basketball hoop. That kind of spawned this whole idea of building a basketball court. Since we put that basketball hoop in our parking lot, it is almost constant use. And we see all ages, kids from the neighborhood. I've seen them coming from several blocks away to play basketball there. And we thought, well, since we have a big piece of unused property, basically, we have an opportunity to give them a place to place of real basketball. One of my visions for that is that we would do maybe summer clinics, get some local coaches to come, do some clinics for the neighborhood kids. I was even thinking with the fire departments, police departments to do tournaments, it would be fundraisers for them. You know, the firemen versus the police or different fire companies again, have a, have a tournament, it would be a fundraiser for them. This is some of our other possibilities for funding. We've applied for a community block grant. Morgan Properties are the folks who own the apartments all around us. And Evan has had some contact with them and they expressed some interest in what we're doing. But it's a great thing for their residents as well. We do have some fundraisers, our chicken barbecues, what we do several times in the summer. Our fundraisers that can put some money towards this. And then individual donations are also have some of those. So our thinking is with this grant, the community development grant, it's kind of like getting the big rocks in first. And then, you know, if we're able to get some, some good sized grants like that to get us up and running. And we do have at least one company, Liberty, Liberty Consulting Services has offered to give us a contribution. Not sure how much, because they figure that out at the end of the year when they do all their stuff. But we also, we have that connection and a few others, so.
The PowerPoint pretty much mirrors what you have on your application. I don't know, anybody have any questions?
Thanks, you did a good presentation.
Yeah. Oh, thank you.
Pretty much spells it out.
Yeah.
Your application spells it out well.
Thank you. Evan's been a big help in that. This is all new to me, so. I've, I've had this idea for quite some time that it would be a good thing for us to do for the community. But really, as I look at it, you know, sometimes it's, it's God's time, the right people come together. And we've had that happen. We have a retired contractor who helped with the original renovation and putting up the basketball hoop. And then we have Evan's engineering, Holly Evans is a member of our church. Did all the engineering and planning pro bono for us. Of course, then we found out how much it was going to cost. So then it was time to start looking for some grants and some funding. And so, and that's where Evan and some others came on and had some experience with that.
Pastor, we appreciate your time. And actually, there's a lot of churches in Dolphin County, done a lot of good things for, for the people in their communities.
Yeah.
There certainly a lot.
Well, thank you.
And I appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
Latoya, any questions? Questions?
Yeah.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very much, I listen.
Thank you.
Keep doing the good stuff.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you.
You'll do.
We're doing what we can.
Yes, sir. No worries.
Good luck with the grandkids.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Good luck babysitting.
Don't wear me out.
Take care.
Take care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, but that's how it.
Marcus.
Marcus Square?
Yes, very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So we have 15 minutes to spend with you. Yes, we do a 10-minute presentation, kind of hard stop, about 10 minutes. So we can have five minutes asking questions. So if you don't mind, just a quick introduction to the new program.
I am Sean Mira. I'm the facility manager of Marcus Square. I've been there for about a year now and it's quite a quiet ability over there.
I'm Janet Hunkel and I am one trustee from the church. And I also serve, helped serve in working the programs for homeless breakfasts in years.
Welcome.
So our grant is a.
You want to hit down button?
Down button, thank you.
And then there isn't a laser, if you need to point at anything.
Thank you. So the purpose of the grant application is to make necessary upgrades to our kitchens. We serve two meals a week. Friday evening takeout style and Sunday morning sit down, pop breakfast. It adds up to, let's say, 1,100 meals a month per day. And that happens in probably six hours each week. So it's, it's a lot of, a lot of time in the kitchen or quick time in the kitchen. It's hectic, lots of people around. And the kitchen was last renovated in 1957. So a couple of things have been replaced here and there. But, but as you'll see in some pictures, it is. So the, the grant, the money that I'm seeking with this grant fund is to make necessary upgrades to things like plumbing equipment, the dishwasher, grease traps, sinks and garbage disposals. You know, very functional upgrades that we need. So here's, here's some exhibits, some of the cabinets do not stay closed.
That's my team, thank you.
My grandpa's born together.
Things are very, very clustered. It's not very well laid out. Our beverage station, the water station doesn't work. The garbage disposal there is at least 20 years old. So we just have a lot of, a lot of things to replace and modernize and we don't have a lot of money to do it. We've had very large dollar ticket items that we've been working on the past couple of years. Fixing the brick exterior of the building. And we have some impending repairs, such as our, we need to get the elevator fixed. That's going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars. So we, we just recognize that we need to get this done, but we don't have a lot to do it to get a lot accomplished all at once. We have a very limited operational budget to dedicate to things like this. So with a project of this scale, it would have to be phased out over a period of years. And that, that makes things tough. So the priorities would be to replace the dishwasher, replace all the cabinets with proper stainless steel kitchen, commercial kitchen grade cabinets, proper manual washing sink and the garbage disposals and grease traps essentially. We do have a potential design contract with Clark Food Service Equipment. The design alone is $10,000, so that of course hasn't happened yet. And I imagine that they would come. They'll of course want to tackle the floors and the green tile on the walls and, and everything, everything that would be, that would be quite a expensive project. So I do, I don't see that happening in the future. But with the grant dollars, whatever we receive would go not specifically towards our service equipment, but towards replacing the things that I can do on my own, the plumbing fixtures, garbage disposals, the dishwasher, things like that. So the full 75,000 is requested. I went through and priced out replacement equipment for as much as I could. Sinks, cabinets, countertops, all of that, storage units, standing freezer, oven. So that some of these things are not, we don't need to replace immediately, but for the sake of the application I went ahead and priced as much as I could. So these upgrades will help us to continue to feed the unhoused that we've served in the downtown area. Our numbers are growing. We are seeing, we are feeding more and more meals each week. We also host in our basement, the International Service Center, and they operate a food pantry out of the basement as well on Friday after news. We also host in our basement, the International Service Center and they operate a food pantry out of the basement as well on Friday afternoons. Having this grant money would also allow us to purchase additional freezers for, for their food entries. And we have our newly installed Reverend Stanley Jenkins from Lansing, Michigan. He just started a couple of weeks ago and he is hitting the ground running, collaborating or putting together meetings to collaborate with Downtown Daily Bread and the Thetis Commission, Christian Churches United and others, just to kind of get everybody in conversation on what we can do about the unhoused community, finding solutions. So that is all that I have.
And you would put some of this stuff in yourself, Sam?
Yes, yes.
On the skin of the game, huh?
Yes, trying to maximize the dollars.
If you had to prioritize, was that the last thing you said if you go back? You had to prioritize what, what?
Yes. The dishwasher is definitely a priority.
Okay.
I am proposing to the trustees this month a short-term leasing option. So we can get, it'd be about $200 a month that we can lease something, short-term, long-term, however long we need, just to get a replacement immediately. And then I would say the garbage disposals would be next, the grease traps and stainless steel cabinets and the sinks followed.
On vacation.
I'm sorry.
How long, how, how large is your-
Large. We are 300, 315, give or take. We have a lot of people, a lot more people are live streaming, but it's on YouTube, so we're still trying to figure out how to get those statistics.
You thought Larry knows, when you go to replace all of those items there, some of the supporting things also don't need to be replaced.
Yes.
Even though you have a really good list. You said some of the things are going to have to wait, some other things will have to wait, well, maybe add it to the list because the work that needs to be done to support the new things that you-
Of course, yes. The grease traps especially would probably require some tearing up of the floor. Yes, and then if we're doing that, then do we do all of the floor at once or? So it-
It kind of just keeps on snowballing.
Yes, yes. The direction which we proceed, how we proceed, what we do first or next, it really depends on how much money we, if we are awarded any money, how much that would be.
Do you have, within the church, do you have a contractor that could give you some idea of how much these items cost? And how much sort of like what I call a supporting cast?
Yes.
Other items to-
We, we don't have a, well, we do have a, I guess Sean's a contractor. We do have an architect on, who's on the House Committee. The House Committee is involved with the physical appearance of the, of the facility. And Alice Ann was a caterer and worked in the restaurant industry for many years. I'm sure Jim Mumper, oh yes, that's right.
So you may want to, if you do have somebody in your kind of business that does that, that can help you sort of plan for and give you some cost of-
Yes.
What it's going to take.
Jim?
Thank you.
Latoya? Any questions? Appreciate what the church does as far as serving others. As I said, I've said before, a lot of churches in the area are doing a lot of good things for people and we appreciate what you do.
Your church is doing with the bedrock and that, that work, that, that work, thanks, good work.
Yeah. We're proud of what we're doing. We're actually making very, very good presentations, good ministry work.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Thank you very much. Have a nice Christmas.
You also.
Very simple.
YMCA?
Welcome. We appreciate you leading out, leading out the lobby for us. We have 15 minutes to spend with you. Like the presentation will last about 10 minutes, it's a hard stop, so you can ask five, four questions. Brief introduction would be nice and we'll get right into your contact.
Sir, my name's David Ossmore. I serve as President and CEO of Harrisburg Y M C A. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight.
I'm Eric Rothman, Related President of Government Relations for Harrisburg Y M C A. Thank you. Last time I was in this room, I was doing a back with cessation program for county employees, so it's nice to be back in the room.
My name is Cece Craver Bear and I'm here supporting the YMCA. I work with GMS Funding Solutions. We're partnering on various capital projects, the YMCA.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to share a few opening remarks, so bear with me as I share the prepared remarks, but I'm going to close it with a phenomenal story, so hang tight, okay? Thank you for the opportunity to share information about this exciting project. The Camp Curtain YMCA kitchen renovation is more than a construction upgrade. It's an investment in community health. It's an investment in resilience for the residents of Uptown. For nearly 60 years, Camp Curtain has been a lifeline in Uptown Harrisburg, serving youth families and seniors through wellness, childcare and food, food security initiatives. But our outdated infrastructure limits our ability to meet the demand. We have recently partnered with the Harrisburg Food Pantry. They moved into our facility and operate five days a week and on rotating Saturdays. And we have seen tons of families and especially with the recent EBT initiatives through the federal government, the demand for the food pantry has risen. This project will modernize our kitchen to meet safety standards and expand our capacity for meal preparation, enabling us to serve more children and seniors. Host community meals and deliver wellness workshops that foster connection and combat isolation. With your support of the $75,000 request with the local shared municipal grant program matched by the YMCA's capital initiative to raise the additional $36,600, we can transform gaming revenue into lasting impact, improve health outcomes, stronger social ties and vibrant hub for intergenerational engagement. This project aligns with Dolphin County's comprehensive plan priorities and delivers a high return on investment in public dollars. Together, we can ensure Camp Curtain continues to nourish spirit, mind and body of everyone that comes to our doors. Our mission is to enhance spirit, mind and body for all, and we're very proud of those last two words in our mission statement, "for all." We do not turn anyone away due to inability to pay. Recently, we just moved $100,000 from our endowment to gift 200 high school students at Harrisburg High free memberships for 12 months. We will do that every year going forward into the future. Our strategic plan calls for us to upgrade all of our facilities across Dolphin and Cumberland County and where our board has approved an $11 million catwalk campaign. The project that, at Camp Curtain leverages gaming revenue for high-impact social infrastructure to enhance services for vulnerable populations and improve community health. Steelworks Construction is the contractor that will be working with us, Jonathan Bowser is the principal. We serve hundreds of kids every day. We are a community hub. Students, residents of the community come to the YMCA for free after school. It is our vision that every night they leave with a meal. It is our vision, as I share this sidebar for just a second, Sean McCoy spoke at our YMCA annual meeting last week. And he told wonderful stories about growing up at the Camp Curtain YMCA. He didn't talk about football at all. And what he did, what he shared was his mentors at the YMCA asked him, "Do you need questions?" And one of the questions he got every day was, "Did you eat?" And I think about that as we try to put together a kitchen program ran by staff, mentors and volunteers, that we will ask the kids that question, "Did you eat today?" We will make sure that those kids do. Project totals, $111,610,000, $75,000 this grant request and $36,610 of YMCA matches. And I want to wrap up. I know 10 minutes can go by very quickly. I did want to give you guys a chance to ask questions. Our vision each and every day is to provide kids a safe hub, a safe hub, a community space where they can gather with mentors that are employed by the YMCA, volunteers that give up their time and their talent and their treasure to provide meals, to provide tutorials through after school program. And we want them to go home not hungry. We want them to go home so they're prepared for their next day at school. But we want to go one step further. My pastor last Sunday talked about significance of the table. Significance of the table where families gather. And in Uptown and in a lot of communities, the family does not exist the way that we do. And so can the YMCA provide the table for not just kids, but for guardians and parents and grandparents? Once a month, we vow to provide a community dinner. Our people will come together at the Camp Curtain YMCA and it'll bring a tear in my eye that first time that we bring bread together. But we're renovating not just the kitchen, we're renovating the entire YMCA. We're putting technology in the facility. We're putting a recording studio in the facility, a podcasting center in the facility, remodeling the entire facility. It's overdue, 60 years that that Y has served the community and it's showing. Yes, kids grow up playing basketball at the Camp Curtain YMCA, but we want to do more. And this project will allow us the infrastructure to serve so many more kids and things, so thank you.
Podcasts, so not only the sports people here now, there's other things the kids like to do, you know, not everybody's a basketball player, right?
Well, that's the purpose of the, of the teen center.
Yeah.
It is to provide laptops and 3D printers and recording studios. Kids can test their, their skill in making music, but podcasting as well.
Is that part of that large campaign, you said 11 million dollars?
So we're going to spend about 1.3 at Camp Curtain total. We're opening a new childcare center in Halifax, which will be about 2.5. And then in a year from, a year from now, we'll invest over $4 billion at the West Shore lot and probably about $3.5 billion at Friendship lot. Ironically, that's not even a building that we own. It's on about a town, lower Paxton Township for the guardians over the next 99 years.
Do you go up in Halifax? I'm sorry, sorry. Do you go up in Halifax location yourself?
We provide breakfast and lunch for how, how much children are served.
You said that you serve at least 100 kids every day at the facility, so five days a week, so you're reaching out to at least 500 kids a week, 20,000, 2,000 a month?
Wow. The infrastructure that it's going to take to serve that many kids meal every day. The kitchen existed for a long, long time, but it, why put commercial equipment in the kitchen? And it's not practical to serve smaller portions, to serve smaller meals, to do teaching opportunities for families to learn how to cook. Teach kids, you know, maybe do some home bag type of situation, teach kids how to prepare meals, so it's exciting.
I think the scope of the community outreach is important for me as a member of the board to make sure that the grant money reaches as many people throughout the county as we possibly can. So I think it's very important to hear that you have such a large footprint in the community and will be able to reach a lot.
We serve over, well over 3,000. Now that's through five facilities, so through the Dolphin, to the West Shore, to the East Shore, to Peter.
And the gym too, it's going to have air conditioning for the first time. So this summer, mid-July and August, when it's hot, the gym will finally be air conditioned for the first time ever.
We do a STEAM, a STEM camp. It's called the STEAM camp, because we had our, but literally and figuratively, the gym has never had air conditioning. And they call it accidentally sweatbox.
Is the pool still there?
No.
Get around the pool.
We rebuilt that space about 10 years ago, 12 years ago. Roland Harrison is still the executive director. It's a brand new state of the art wellness center. So fitness is a part of the infrastructure of that YMCA today.
I thought I stepped on you. Did you have any other questions?
No, I thought I stepped on you.
You guys do, like Tim just said, you have a huge footprint with Dolphin County and other areas, but we're, we're in Dolphin County and we really appreciate what you do. And your, all your employees.
How many contracts do you think you serve?
Oh my gosh, yeah, we have a track record with county service provider contracts ranging from youth prevention to aging. And all of our branches also, as long as I've been around, I know since at least 2002, we've had service provider contracts with the county in multiple areas. I would say with the DNA contracts, aging, at least, yeah, purchase of service agreements. So we have a great tracker moving down. We've had for 25 plus years. And you guys have been so gracious to us in the past with Senior Life Center, that was with all those expansion, the Dolphin branch, that was all gaming dollars, that helps me back, so I appreciate that. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and your volunteers and your employees, thank them.
If you meet a YMCA board member, encourage them to dig deep in their checkbook.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Been a long time. I'm still at it. I still, I might be going to some other shop, but I'm still have my hand in the back of one of them, so.
Sounds good.
It's nice to see you. I feel like Susan though, I'm sorry.
They're making it. I'll tell you, they've struggled for a while, but they've really been-
He gone in here or is that the-
He came on the, the best of things, the bad ones.
If you, yeah, just going to take us a little bit to more room. Get over here. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. We have 15 minutes to spend with you.
Great.
Hopefully in 10 minutes, we can do the presentation and then hard stop gives us the opportunity to ask you some questions. And then Parkstop gives us the opportunity to ask you some questions. Short introduction.
Like to do that. Gary Langford, Executive Director of Tri-County Housing. And I have Luke Galen, the Delta Development Group, Salton. Just a real quick background. Our 501(c)(3) nonprofit is this year celebrating its 35th year of creating affordable housing throughout the city of Harrisburg, Dolphin, and Prairie Counties. I've just recently recognized State Representative Dave Mattson and State Representative Davidson in a House of Representatives citation acknowledging their 35 years. Very excited about that.
Congratulations.
11 years now. We have an array of projects ongoing throughout the area. Currently, it was 4th Street, 2100 block of 4th Street in City Harvester, with a five-unit townhouse under construction for homeownership. Little moderate income families. We have a very rich history of our tenure. We've done well over 800 units of a four-bedroom house. Do you have probably a total of eight projects, varying stages? This one in Halifax Township with the Emperor of the Academy, we're very excited about. Very unique opportunity. It is in a USDA rural designated area. We try to do a lot of emphasis on rehabilitation in the city and surrounding communities. Housing is needed in the rural areas also, so this is an opportunity for us to do that. We were fortunate to be able to acquire this six-unit townhouse site back in July of 2022 with the assistance of former State Senator John DeSanto. He provided us with DCD ARPA funds that permitted us to be able to acquire this site. He actually provided us a total of $500,000 of ARPA funds, which we used the $25,000. In addition to that, we have received funding. I know that was asked. I have some questions. See if you're in the screen. We're fortunate to receive funding from PFA Fair Funds, DCD NAP dollars, and some foundation funds. We had a little bit of a downer, I will tell you. In the last administration in the United States Senate, Senator Casey was very instrumental and sponsored a federal earmark application of a million dollars for this project. It was actually approved by the Senate Appropriations Committee. But then when they took on the approval last year's budget back in the spring, all federal earmarks were eliminated with transportation. So we already need some funding here. The other part of this project, which is very exciting, and I know Representative Kerwin is very interested in this military background. Two of these six homes will be targeted strictly for veterans. Two of the units will be to fund children income between 50 and 80%. And, excuse me, between 50 and 60. The other units will be sold to those no higher than 80% of the county. It's a real good incentive.
I think, earmark, the plan is to resubmit or do we?
We are, we are. We are to resubmit. We told everybody, we told everybody, it's a federal settlement.
You have not submitted. You're just in the talking stage.
Any questions?
Yeah. On your... On your upcoming projects or the ones in the area, who do you use as contractors?
We publicly bid all our projects. We're starting to do that with funding sources that we receive. That's what we do.
I just wanted to look for your upcoming contracts. Do you get local contractors?
Yes, yeah. We typically get three to five bids is typically where we receive these projects. The North 4th Street project here in the city, it's under construction right now. WSL Inc., it's probably new to the city. We do publicly bid all our contracts.
On the 4th Street, what did you say that was? Was that two homes or?
Five townhouses. It actually replicates a project we did up here in South Allisonville. We completed it less than two years ago on Hummel Street. It's like a block past the Brother and Housing Association. It's a comprehensive project named as Muller Square. We're by the City Housing Authority, did some loan to house tax credit for rental housing. We ended up doing 10 homes for homeownership on that block, five total rehabs. And then we did a five-unit townhouse. So this North 4th Street is actually the identical building shape and size. And that site we acquired through the city.
Anything else?
What are they going to sell for?
Under $150,000 will be based on the income. The lower 50% of the income sold in the lesser. Look at those clients and individually.
Do you have the timing for resubmitting for the federal funds and when it could possibly be awarded?
It typically goes in in like the first quarter of the year. And then it depends on like, yeah, it follows political processes in the federal budget process.
Good. Thank you very much. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Quite well. If there are any other questions, I can come and share.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thanks for waiting.
Have a great holiday season.
I hope you guys come to Shirley's.
We might be, yeah, with that straightforward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are for me. What? Go on to this. They want to trust to be heard to. We have the same time. And everybody wants to be here a half hour early.
One more. All right. Can I have a little bit of you? Welcome. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
I didn't. Thank you.
We have 15 minutes to spend with you. Like the presentation, the last 10. We have five minutes to ask any questions people have for you. Yourself, we'll get right into the project.
Okay. My name is Mark Domingos. I own and moves for me. We're a for-profit flipping company. Warehouse is located in 813 Market Street, so if you're familiar with Harrisburg, it's close to office. We rent space there from Equilibrium Equities. We have a few box trucks, we have some state contracts. Living company started in 2017. Throughout the years, we've just been trying to have one thing in the community that we do. It's kind of like our advocacy thing. Growing up here in the area, seeing the story of Milton Hershey. Certain things a business can do. I know a lot of times people ask why would a for-profit business want to receive grant funds? I can see people ask that question, but I mean, we do have the ability to gift in kind. So essentially what I'll do is the causes that I like to align with are domestic violence, human trafficking, victim witness, vets that go through the sheltered process. And we'd like to basically give our services when they leave the shelter, when they find housing. So if you have a gap between, I think domestic violence is one year, vets is six months, where they get housing, these things paid for. And what we found is that the people, I'm just going to use the Y as an example. We do a great job of vetting everybody to find somewhere for them to go. But it's the day that they need to move, it's the staff that's actually helping. It's not their job to help them move. Moving can be treacherous, especially like conditions like we had the last couple of days. It'd be heavy injuries. So it just started, we started kind of wanting to give back when we saw older person in the community. And a lot of guys would say, you know what, you don't have to pay me. I'll do it. Reminds me of my mom, reminds me of my grandmother. So we kind of took the concept and just ran with it. So with what we're asking for here, it's just funds to expand our storage space. We're in Market Street, it's an open blueprint. We also looked at other storage space on 1000 Cameron Street. That's Miranda Justice. It's on the corner of Cameron and Herb. They have 10,000 square feet. That's a huge space. We actually got a visit from Lieutenant Governor a couple of weeks ago there. Just looking at the spot and kind of going over some things that we'd like to do in the future. But the storage space would be the beginnings of a furniture bank. If this is a year-over-year sustained effort, we can accumulate the furniture. It's also unique about what we're doing is we're using our customers. So since 2017, we're up to like 2,800 customers. These are paying customers that live in our suburbs, even Forest Hills, Fortunda, Dillsburg. I just was in Alabama. We take people all over. Oftentimes, more than not, they say, do you know someone who can use this? Do you know someone who can use that? So the idea is instead of us taking to the incinerator and just, you know, polluting our environment and causing waste and trash, we have space, we can find these items. They're usually pretty good. A lot of people ask about bed bugs, pests and roads and things like that. People that can afford to pay $10,000 to move usually don't have that kind of problem in their house. But we would get the items from our customers, store them, and then work with agencies. We do a lot of work with New Diggs. I love them. They're great, but they're only open Wednesdays and Saturdays. So a huge impact, but they're not available. So since we have the facility, since we have the truck, we can deliver to this need. Homelessness is a problem in the city. I live right across the street from America Building. I look out at a bus stop. Better now, but a year ago it was chaos. I mean, even in the last couple of months with politics, food lines long, people are going through some things. Homes to Cameron is moved, it's still a problem. So when they do go through the problem, or they do go through rehabilitation, when they get evaluated, when they get placed housing, you can't put them in empty apartment. That's when they go back to their abuser. That's when they go back to the streets for drugs. That's when it just goes back over. So if we can give our time, which is really the main thing that I bet, what do I give or what do I throw in, right? Like if I'm asking for funds for storage and the truck, really I'm giving the time up. It's okay for me to chalk up an hour or two of these guys' labor comes out. They don't know that, that no one's paying for it. I just do it. In my application, I didn't get a chance to submit, but I do have a letter from Representative Fleming. Lynda Geesman, she was my principal of Sesame Ridge Township in elementary school. She works with Ridge Ray Church, which is right next to Sesame Ridge Township, and Brother and Housing. We've done over 11 houses there. So she'll call, I'll go to her house in Forest Hills, her bunch of churches, Pembroke United Church of Christ, they all throw in. These are ladies in their 60s and up. They accumulate furniture. We go pick it up, take it to Brother and Housing. Now they're talking about when they move out, can it follow? We've done it for the YWCA. It's been helpful, but with them it was a funding issue. So I mean, they did what they could. But we would just like to say, hey, we're a business. That's what we can do. If we have the resources and truck and additional storage, we can accumulate it. The same procurement system that we use for regular customers, we can apply to nonprofits and agencies, book the service, pick the furniture, we just deliver it. So that's really essentially what I'm looking at and asking for.
So have you identified, I'm not quite sure if you identified new, you're looking for new warehouse space or you're looking to expand the footprint where you currently are at the post office?
It just depends. It depends on the level of support that comes back. I mean, on a minimal level, yeah, we can probably double or triple. It's like a 1,200 square foot plot, but it's an open area. So on the higher end, we get a more secure situation where we're not sharing the space. Like we share space with the restaurant auction. They're long-term tenant, but they're safe. I mean, we have all of our stuff there. So it just depends on what happens. So in the minimal level, we can get more space. Maximum level, we can space, racks, different material handling, things like that.
Well, if you're awarded this grant, will any of the equipment, the truck, the space be used for your for-profit business or will be only used for this component?
The storage 100% would be used for the items that we pick up. The vehicle, I mean, it's hard to draw that line. I mean, I guess I have to understand the guidelines more, to be honest. Only because it's our paying customers that are giving up the stuff, right? So that's one thing. If we were doing work for, let's say, a nonprofit, or then I would not really adjust that price because it was a gift to us. So we pass it on.
And then your labor expenses you absorb through your for-profit company?
Yes, at this point, we do that. We're looking for additional assistance through the state and federal government. We have a Zoom HUD a couple of weeks ago with the HUD administrator. So I know that there's a lot of funds that go to nonprofits stemming from HUD. The problem is they're asking for money for administrative fees, everything, including moving. But when the actual need needs to be met, that gets waived. That's not important. So I've approached nonprofits and financial institutions. And when the money is available, they say, we'll take it, but not for mobile. So.
If you would embark on this program and would get funding, would you be able to track the times that the equipment or the vehicle or the storage is used for that purpose? Is that something you could track?
Sure, 100%. So on ordering form, like right now, if you were just a regular customer, you can select the moving, where you're moving from, where you're moving to. It all comes through an online order form. But I have an area there for junk removal or cleaning, right? So I can allocate donation. So we can just earmark the time from, let's say, your move is from nine to five. There's 30 minutes there, back to the storage unit, it gets logged in. The idea for the website is to have kind of like an online store. So someone at an agency can just go on and look. You have a left seat, you have a table, they can click it, submit the order, a ticket comes out. And that way, it's just, we're not trying to really reinvent anything. It's just a little bit of an add-on and tweak, but that way it's transparent. I studied nonprofit administration in college. I think graphic copy, this study, that subject mattered a lot. But my biggest problem, and I wrestle with this because two years ago I did apply. We did get some funding that was helpful. The kick is forward where we are now. But I see a lot of other people coming in and they have these ideas. But at the end of the idea, you don't see the finished product, but you see the money went there. So for this, I'm like, hey, look, one, two, three, there it is. Like, and we have a lot of customers. I mean, you'd be surprised what people give away.
It seems like you're really targeting an at-risk population groups. Like the folks you're helping, they're really at-risk groups and they need that assistance. So it seems like you're really filling a need for those.
Hey, I think it could be better, honestly. I mean, this is a concept, it's something I would like to do moving forward. I'm trying to develop a concept to kind of do this with other moving company owners. But you got to look to the private sector a lot, set for help. Like the government can do some things and then, and then... So this program is cool because it's revenue from gaming. But to go back into the community, if this is something that happens, people are getting furnished, what they do with it, but it's better than an empty place.
So any, an organization, veteran support groups, you know, talking about domestic violence, folks, children, youth services, those type of, you know, at-needs community members could seek your assistance?
Sure, sure. I'm limited to what I know, and I don't know everything. But I have, I've been here, I've been to a couple of meetings. I just kind of align people I know that actually do it. And I'm just trying to be careful who I work with because like I said, some people get whopping amounts of funding and you don't see what happens. So it's a delicate subject, but I just want to show straight impact. And as a for-profit business owner, it helps. For me, it's going to help me, right? Like if I go and I am moving someone who's not hard up for anything, that's a point, you know? So I make my money that way, right? Like going to these neighborhoods, pitching my service. Oh, you guys do this too? That's what they, when you go, you do a good job. What else do you do? Can you guys, do you know someone who does this, who does that? But if we're there and we're saying, hey, we align with this. We were Brother and Housing called ABC 27, we're on TV. So one of my main guys always pulls the video out and shows it to my customers. Sometimes people think they're lying, but it's serious. Like, no, we really do this. But my crew leader, he grew up, I didn't know this until we were doing a donation. His mother stayed at the YWCA twice. She was abused, went through it, and he was one of three boys. So like, we... So like, we, he tells me anytime they call, I'm doing it for free, his mom passed away, but he he grew up like that. I mean, if you watch the thing on TV, that's what he says, but uh it's it's a direct impact, and then it's also something that we can say. Hey, out of all the things we can do, that's something that we do do, so like, I live right here, I can complain, say there's homeless people outside, but that's what I can do about it.
Certainly, I respect and I appreciate your direct approach to it, and I like your answer, and I like the way you deal with it, and it seems like you're, you're really, you know, making a positive impact.
Trying, trying.
Do you have a, I know, I know you, you have a sort of, I guess now, this, we want to be at the same campus, we're seven years even, so.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, really, it's just getting started to get the support, like the luck, the big warehouse we looked at is ten thousand square feet. I mean, we only have so many customers, but as you, as you build and you accumulate this furniture, like we do property cleanouts as well as moving. So we work with a lot of real estate agents, a lot of Realtors, so if there's a Realtor that has an estate. Sons in Arizona, daughters in California, it's the house full, and usually it's the house, but an older person who has money, it's clean, it's fine. The house, I was living, someone just passed away, all that stuff can get repurposed. So I mean, I don't know how much space I'm gonna need, I don't, I don't know, but I know that if I start saying this is what I'm doing, eh the the support is gonna be there for sure. I mean, it's just in my network, but I know like just on the county, if you just go to their support and services. Um I was looking at that spreadsheet the other day, it's like sixty-five different agencies. But I went and just started going down and saying, hey, I do this, I do this, I do this, so and that's another business. It it it's something that goes in another direction than it's me having a movie company, but.
You have a vision, it sounds kind of like, oh, I do whatever.
Ma'am, I'm, I'm, ma'am, I'm sorry, who are you, did you introduce yourself, I I missed it, I'm. I'm so sorry.
No, 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 no.
Are you, are you working with him and his organization?
No, I don't, um I'm, I'm, my name's Frank Bor, I'm the advance director for the.
For?
Alexi de Harris, I'm just here to kind of be more supportive.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that.
No, it's my fault, I'm so sorry.
Thank you for your input, yeah, thank you. No, 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 I just, I I just need to. So you're here to, you're here to support him for.
Yeah, it just, it just, I mean, we're, we're moral support, we are a co-applicant, so the. Organization is uh eligible to apply for a document, can be an application, etc.
Yeah, oh, great, I mean, I think this is a great idea, it seems like he's really doing a good thing for, for folks who really need that assistance. Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions?
Thanks for your time.
Yes, thank you, it's good work.
Oh, thank you.
You're doing good things.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Sir.
Thanks for your time, I was here all night.
One more, one more. Hey, thanks for your time, man. You were here last night, right?
I was, I was.
Usually the people that speak are part of the presentation, so I'm sorry, I thought you, I was trying to figure out your relationship with them, but thank you.
You have nothing to be sorry about.
Not at all.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, I've been here so late.
Yes. Last but not least.
So we have fifteen minutes for your presentation, we would like to get that done in ten.
Okay.
So we can pause stop and ask you five minutes worth of questions if we have it, okay? Uh if you don't mind, just introducing yourself and the floor of yours.
Okay, if I sit down or?
Yeah, yeah.
So I, my name is Aretha Donald, I am the owner of, well, I was the owner of Katie's Preferred Home Care Agency. That opened up in twenty twenty, I sold in twenty twenty-three. During that three years, which actually opened up during the pandemic, right? And so during that three years, um I served the nine counties. During the nine counties, what I discovered is a lot of the veterans and seniors do not know. How to go about getting help. Um they don't know how to go about getting an aid. Um speaking from experience myself, I was uh taking care of my mother, my mother was diagnosed with early stages of Alzheimer's. So someone has to quit and take care of mom, or there's nursing home, that's the options. And so I decided to quit my job, I think back then my mother was getting eight hundred and fifty dollars disability. And so, of course, we had to use some of her check to pay the bills, because I had to quit my job to take care of mom. I knew about the Medicaid waiver, but no one was telling me about it, either they knew and they didn't want me to know, or they just didn't know. Either way, I struggled with my mother for three years. My sister worked at PPI Hospital, which is located here in Harrisburg on Front Street, and one day she called me out of Clear Blue Moon, and she said. Uh Doty, which is my nickname, she said, the doctor's here and he's willing to fill out mom's certification physician form, M A. Oh my God, that is the form that I've been looking for for years to take care of mom. They filled it out, and now I'm able to make a decent income, because my mother is ninety-one hours a week. And mom does not have to go into the nursing home. The life expectancy for someone that has Alzheimer is seven years. My mother's been living down for nine, and she lives at home. So during the duration of being a caregiver, I sat around during COVID and decided to become a home care provider, so I went higher. But I have witnessed people just like me, Doty, I don't know what to do, my loved ones need help. Um we don't want to quit our jobs, we don't want to, uh we can't afford to quit our jobs, and so. What fifteen hundred North Sixth Street, what it would provide is the form that I was looking for. Can come to the hub spot and I can provide that form, so mom can stay at home instead of going into a nursing home, okay? Also, for the veterans, I I am contracted with the veterans, and so when I go out to do assessments, I lay eyes on the veterans. Why is he standing on the corner with the sign begging for food when he has benefits, when he has served this country? And how they have shamed him? Well, the hub spot will provide the documentations to find out if he, if there's benefits there for him. Nine out of ten times, if he served in the military, there's going to be benefits there for him, he will never have to hold another sign on the corner again. And so what the hub spot will do. He will provide phones. So they can come in and they can call to find out if their funds are there. It's not only helped the vet, the veterans, but it also helps surviving spouses as well, okay? I, as a home care provider for those nine counties, transportation. A lot of times I went to do assessments, Doty got to wrap this assessment up, because the transportation is coming, so I can get to my appointments. I will sit there with the participant, transportation never shows up. They missed their appointments, they missed their medication pickup, they missed their appointment at the VA. We will provide that at the hub spot. Um also, I was already during, in the duration of this project, before I found out about the gaming. This is the building, this is what it looks like, I have the three contractors already, I spoke with Matt. So this here is the front of the building at fifteen hundred North Sixth Street, okay? Uh across the street is actually the mission, so there's a lot of homeless, disabled people over there. That do not know that they qualify for Medicaid and that they can get help, just like me, okay? The hub spot will. Will also provide this here, so it's an outreach informational spot. That will provide transportation, documentations, and they can also come in and use the phone. Fifteen hundred North Sixth Street, everyone can get here, it's in the heart of Pennsylvania, it's in the heart of Harrisburg. Maximum comes out once a year. The service coordinator comes out once a year, me as a home care provider, I go out every ninety days. I am the eyes for the state of Pennsylvania, if you have a barrier, I report that back to the state. So basically, what a provider is for the elderly is what a social worker is for children and youth. So I report abuse, I report if you're struggling with something. This is why I come in as a provider and report it back to the state of Pennsylvania, AKA Department of O L T O, Office of Long Term. Okay, well, wrap it up, this um the back of the building. What I showed these guys earlier was the front, and this is actually the back. Okay, go over for questions.
Is that just one floor of that building that you're talking about?
Yes, that's one.
So have you contacted or discussed the veteran services with any existing outreach? For instance, the Veterans Center on Second Street, Disabled American Veterans, the American Legion, or Veterans of the War Advocates? Have you reached out to and discussed this plan with them?
I am familiar with those programs, the difference between them and me, they're not a provider, so. I go out and I have to see the participants, when it's, when O L T L sends me a participant, I have to go out to your home and do a home assessment. What that home assessment consists of, you're gonna tell me your needs, I'm gonna go check your refrigerator to make sure you have food, I'm gonna check your hot water. To make sure that you're not here struggling with something, and then I'm gonna report that back, so the difference between them and me, I'm actually hands-on. And I do this every ninety days for the nine counties that I've been approved for. I'm already contracted with the Veterans Care Connection, who already sends me veterans already, so that's what separates me.
Which, like, what is the, the, like, the trigger point when a veteran can get your services? Is it a a hundred percent disabled, like, what is, because I'm familiar with the process, so. So what veterans are eligible for your services and how do they get it?
Okay, if you're, if you come in and you're eligible, what I can do, I can help you with housing. If you don't have housing, um because the veterans, you know, they have uh Section Eight, things like that, if they don't have housing right away. We can assist them with vouchers, we can, I can find out if there's military benefits for you. And if you have a spouse, then your spouse would qualify for those benefits as well, but I can.
And my, I guess my question is, the, the other agencies I discussed, they have direct connections and links to the Veterans Administration? Are you registered with the Veterans Administration to serve as an advocate for a veteran, a certified advocate?
No, I'm actually, no, I'm actually third-party registered with the Veterans Care Connection. Which is directly uh contracted with the Veterans Affairs, so providers, home care providers, we're third-party. However, it doesn't take away the fact, as a provider, I still have to go do the ninety-day assessment throughout the year.
So the veteran would already be in a program before they would get the home health of those services?
If they're already with the Veterans Care, if they're not, the hub spot will provide a space for them to come. To call to see if they have benefits, if they, you know, they are, if they qualify.
Okay, because that's what the advocates do right now, like the Vet Center on Second Street, A V. Uh the American Legion, the V F W, they have like actually authorized advocates, and that's who would do that for them, so I'm just trying to piece this together. You know, the number, like, who do you have them to call, like, just a general number?
No, they would actually, they would actually call, um his name is uh, I believe it's Jason, Jason, um. I don't remember his last name, but that's who I'm working with, um with Veterans Care Connection, so.
Jason would work with the Veterans Care?
Yes, and so what happens is they'll come in, they try to find out, they make phone calls, I can just get on the phone and talk to um Jason. And if you know the program, then I would need when they were born, or here they served, um. And to make sure that they're a Harrisburg uh Harrisburg citizen, make sure they live in the residence, but well, make sure they live in uh those nine counties. Like, I can only serve within those nine counties, and so.
Yeah, this, the, this is all new, and I, I have pretty extensive experience in that, and I'm just, this is very new to me, so I'm just trying to.
Right.
Figure out how this.
But here, but here's the thing, I don't want to just focus on the veterans, because like I said, as a provider that's been doing this for years, I see the veterans. I see uh people that work all their lives, and now we have to liquidate our homes, so our mother can, can go to a nursing home. What I do, I come in, I'm the middle person that says, hey, I can show you how to keep that home, I can show you how to keep that boat. Because if you get old, getting old is not, believe it or not, it's not free, you've got to pay someone. And so what I do, I come in and I let them know, I know programs, I know things, and I know where to call, so you can stay in your home. Without going to a nursing home, people call me, hey, Doty, the nursing home's charging me twelve thousand a month, would you take eight instead of caregiver? Absolutely, and so now you don't have to liquidate your home or your boat or your car, you can actually stay in what's familiar. What you worked for all your life versus going into a nursing home, because no one told you about the waiver. No one told you about Department of A D that has an option program where you can actually stay at home and keep what you worked hard.
And the waiver program is for a family member to receive um the benefits from Medicare, Medicaid. To be the primary care provider for the family members at the waiver program.
The Medicaid, the waiver is for the person that is disabled, it solidifies health, once the waiver, the waiver's for life. So it basically says, if, God forbid, if something happens, so you become disabled, instead of you going to a nursing home, or defaulting to a private pay. Medicaid would waive those funds, and now I'm able to send someone in, a C N A, a nurse, or a doctor, a direct care worker to service you.
Thank you. Do you, you do it by yourself?
I do. This is what separates me from everyone else, because. Um not only that, a lot, and I'm finding out a lot of people don't know, if you're a homeowner, Medicaid will all, will make your house handicap accessible. So your bathroom, Medicaid will pay for your bathroom, if you can't walk anymore, you know, the hover round that goes up there, Medicaid will pay for that. You need a ramp, because you can't walk up the steps anymore, Medicaid will pay for that, but how would you know that if you don't have a hub spot? And someone that's telling you what, what you can get?
Uh, okay, so. You work by yourself?
I work by myself.
And you cover nine counties?
I cover nine counties.
Really?
Yeah, my first agency, it took me a minute to figure it, to figure this whole thing out, my second agency, I'm, I was doing it anyway. Because I know what the people need, and and I always say, let's get in front of it, because it's our fate. Someone's, someone's gonna have to do it, so.
You're requesting for the funding?
Yes.
It seems like, well, is it office space for some of the things you were talking about, like a, a phone bank for people to make calls or?
Yes.
Okay.
While you're on that, so I'm gonna jump on the budget.
Absolutely.
So I just have a couple of questions about your budget, so you're requesting ninety-six percent of what the total project's gonna cost, correct?
Yes.
So what is your plan for, I get some of these are one-time costs, your construction, your labor, building materials. Uh but your total rent, um that's pretty big, that's gonna be a recurring cost, correct?
Yes.
So what's the plan, if you're awarded the, if you're awarded the grant, what's your plan after year one?
Um, Mike, well, to continue to receive participants that were unable to bill Medicaid. So I bill AmeriHealth, I bill P Health and Wellness, and I bill U P M C. And so as a provider, there's no limit to the insurance company, so let's say you are with Humana. You're with Humana and you need services, then it's my job as a provider to get, it's called prudentially. It's my job to get prudential with Humana, so I can service you, and it's not just the M C Os, which is what that's called. It's also the Veterans Care Connection, and I'm also able to bill this spreadsheet.
Yeah, uh so I, I think it was clarified, so you're going to serve nine counties, not nine municipalities, Dalton County.
Nine counties.
And they'll all be served out of this space?
Yes, they can come, when I go do an assessment, I can let them know, we have a hub spot in Harrisburg. When I go do an assessment, I can let them know we have a HubSpot in Harrisburg. Sometimes family. Here of their father, they want to see who was the provider that saved your mother. They want to see who's coming in her home.
Where are you currently operating?
Um, I've been in Susquehanna, uh, for six years at fifty-five South Progress Avenue. Um, I've been in Susquehanna, I've been in Susquehanna for fourteen years. I've been operating my business out of Susquehanna for the last six years. And so this year, I decided, let me go in Harrisburg. Because it seems like the demand is more in Harrisburg, um, than it is, uh, in Susquehanna. Why? Because Harrisburg, when I'm finding, is more low-income. Whereas Susquehanna is working-class people. So Susquehanna is more of my private pays. Harrisburg, I'm seeing that there's a major gap, which is why I'm seeing a lot of homelessness and a lot of people that are disabled, a lot of veterans on the corners, and these people don't know.
Okay, so you're currently operating out of?
Susquehanna.
Yes.
Fifty-five, yes, fifty-five South.
And then, if you get the, the grant money, you're gonna do this build-out of?
I was one of.
Fifteen hundred or sixteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred, right across from the Ravelry Building, courthouse.
Yeah, okay. And it'll be. You have all this space, but I have a hard time figuring out what you're gonna do with all the space.
Okay, so, um, um, so.
She's not stealing the whole building, just the first, a part of the first floor?
Yes.
Not the whole building, just a part of the first floor?
Yeah, but as you said, that's like two thou, two hundred thousand dollars a year in rent.
Well, I have the cubicles already. I bought them with my first agency. Um, so we have the cubicles, we need the phones, um, the vans for transportation, um, I think, what else? Um. So for the administrators that are going to be able to help me. Um, and so instead of me doing the assessments by myself, I can hire staff to go with me.
That was my point, you're gonna, you're gonna have some additional staff?
Yes.
You have additional staff to ask?
Well, I have my staff from my previous, um, home care agency. I still have three hundred and eighty-one caregivers in my database, um, from my old agency, but I still have them there, I still have access to them, so.
My question, I have a question.
The, um, lease or cover page or the lease that you submitted with the application on October first says that it's dated November first, twenty twenty-five. I'm just not understanding how it would say we're entering into it.
Yes, I was supposed to move in October the first, but there was a discrepancy. Somebody, somebody went forward November the first. So November, November the first was the reaction date, I actually have a key to it.
That part makes sense to, you know, setting an occupancy date in the future. I'm not understanding, saying, we're signing a lease today, dating it. We're saying that we're entering into it on November first, on October first, so. That's what you did. Is that what you're saying?
No, it was supposed to be October the first. I think they have a red line, so they crossed it out. Um, so yes, it was supposed to be October first, but me and Ralph, AKA Martin, his son, we decided November the first. So there's, it's not, that's how the, it wasn't making sense, okay? Thank you.
Now, we, we asked everybody this. What would happen if she didn't get the money?
Well, I was already doing it, and so I would finish it.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Yes, um, there, now, yes, Martin is, um, is Martin's property. And so the only reason why I'm doing the build-out, okay?
Most, ma'am, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, we're giving you thirty minutes.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was just, ain't gonna answer, go ahead.
Yep. Sorry, questions have to come.
She's not on the board. She's not a board.
All right, any other questions? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for all you do, thank you.